Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Maplewood Planning Board. This meeting is being held by way of Zoom remote video conference. Pursuant to Section 5 Public Law 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of the meetings for 2023 in the news record, South Orange Maplewood, and the Star Ledger in December of 2022, and by filing of said notice in the office of the municipal clerk. Notification with access information for the meeting via phone conference and Zoom was made public by publication in the news record and on the township website. Ms. Lewis, would you please call the roll for attendance?
Mayor Daphnis? Don't think he's here yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Committeewoman Adams?
Here.
Ms. Latham?
Here.
Mr. Titus is excused. Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Ms. De Nooser? Ms. Ward?
Yeah.
Ms. Scott? Ms. Scott?
She was here.
She was here, right?
And Mayor Daffis is having difficulty as well. He's... I'm sure he'll be with us in...
I'm here. I was having trouble getting off of mute. Sorry.
No problem. And Ms. Stig?
Here.
So we have a quorum.
Great. I was just looking to see if Mayor Daffis was in yet. I'm sure he'll be in momentarily. Um, sorry. Whereas Section 7 provides that the planning board has the discretion to permit, prohibit, or regulate the active participation of the public at any meeting. Whereas it is the desire of this planning board to comply with the provisions of this act and at the same time to conduct its business in an orderly and expeditious manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning board of the Township of Maplewood that it does prohibit, except as set forth in the formal agenda, active participation in the deliberations of this planning board at all of its regular meetings. Can I please have a motion to accept these operating procedures?
I'm moved.
And a second? Second. Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you call the roll to approve the procedures?
Committeewoman Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Latham?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Stig?
Yes.
And Chair Pachota?
Yes. Mayor Daffis is joining us now. Um, the members of the planning board received the minutes electronically in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any comments or edits to those meetings from, to those minutes from our last meeting? All right, hearing none, then can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes from the May meeting?
Okay. Somebody move it.
I make a, excuse me, I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Mayor Daffis?
Yes.
Ms. Latham?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yeah.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
And Ms. Stig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And just to state for the record that Township Committeeman Vic De Luca is joining us as well. All right, um, this evening, we're going to start with the resolution for case PB 2301 for 1611 Springfield Avenue. The applicant was Honey and Hive Ice Cream. Do any members of the board have any comments on this case that was approved at the last meeting? All right. Um, and so no proposed revisions. So can I have a motion to memorialize the resolution granting approval of case PB 2301?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Daffis?
Yes.
Ms. Latham?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
And Ms. Stig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, so now we are going to move on to this evening's main event. Before we get started with the hearing and the presentation of the draft of the new Maplewood Master Plan, I just want to extend my thanks to the members of the Steering Committee, many of whom are here this evening. They all volunteered generously volunteered their time to work on this endeavor. I also want to thank BFJ Planning and FHI Studio. They have outstanding listening skills and are incredibly patient. And I feel like they have given thoughtful consideration to every aspect of developing this plan. I also want to offer a reminder to everyone present this evening that this, this hearing is about listening. No action is being taken on this draft master plan this evening. Uh, tonight, as has been the case throughout the past fifteen or so months, and the development of this plan has been very much about listening. Listening to planning board members, listening to the community at large, listening to people who live, work, and play in Maplewood. The comments and feedback that we receive this evening and in the next few weeks will determine whether or not this plan is ready for consideration for adoption or if there are issues that are in need of further consideration. I also want to remind everyone that while the master plan is indeed a planning board document, it offers dozens of recommendations and it is a guide for our community. It will be used by the Township Committee to consider creating or updating ordinances. It will be used by the zoning board in consideration of whether or not to change zoning or permitted uses for various zones. It will be used by the Health Department, the Green Team, the Environmental Team, the Environmental Advisory Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, DPW, the Special Improvement Districts, Department of Community Services. It'll be used by many organizations throughout our community and obviously by the planning board to guide us as we hear applications going forward. In time, we as a community will decide what recommendations to actually implement. But for right now, I invite you to listen to what has been developed, listen to the draft of the plan as it currently stands and give it your thoughtful consideration. Uh, next steps, so BFJ Planning is going to give us a formal presentation of the plan. That will be followed by an opportunity for the members of the planning board to ask questions and provide their comments. And then we will open it up to members of the public to ask questions and provide your feedback. Um, we will try to do this in a orderly and expeditious manner. And if for some reason, we will try to get to everybody this evening, but if the meeting goes particularly long and we have to conclude, there is still an opportunity to provide your comments to the planning board in writing. So, with that said, it is my pleasure to turn things over to Susan Favati from BFJ Planning as well as Christine Jimenez and Peter Van De Coy also from BFJ. They have guided us through this process. We're in good hands and so I will put myself on mute and and turn it over to you, Susan.
Great. Thank you, Karen. As Karen mentioned, tonight is mostly about listening and we are really eager to hear your comments or questions. We do have a presentation to formally present the draft. It's about thirty-five slides. We will try to be brief. If you've attended any meetings, you've probably seen some of these slides before. But we know that some folks might be tuning in for the first time tonight, so we, we are going to recap a few things that might be review for some of you, but you know, it's sort of the best opportunity to present the draft and it is still very much a draft, as Karen mentioned. It's likely to have changes before the end. Certainly, we know, already know that they're typos, so we are more than happy to make those corrections as well as any other points that are raised tonight or on July 11th. So I know Christine's going to pull up the presentation and we will try to get through it fairly expeditiously so that we can hear from all of you. And so first off, I think as our agenda for the evening, if you'll go to the next slide, Christine, I think there's a slight delay. There you go. So we have a quick overview of the project, recap the vision, goals, and objectives, which are really the guiding framework of the plan and are derived directly from the engagement that we conducted throughout this process. The meat of the plan and a lot of the meat of tonight's presentation is the strategies and recommendations. You know, the key ones tonight, there are many, as Karen mentioned, they're in the action plan, they're fully in the draft document, but we wanted to highlight some of the main ones tonight. And then you'll hear about the future land use plan and the recommended zoning changes, since it is primarily a land use document. They're implementing measures that regarding land use in particular and zoning as well. We'll touch on the implementation and action plan, which is in the final chapter of the draft plan. It's really the kind of full list of all the recommendations and then we want to have that opportunity to hear from all of you, whether that's questions or comments. Okay. So just a very quick overview of the project. As Karen mentioned, it was led by a master plan and steering committee. The planning board adopts a master plan under New Jersey law. And that is the case here in Maplewood, but also the township chose to enact a steering committee that includes members beyond the planning board, which is an interesting way to get a little bit broader perspective from some of the folks who are very much involved in a lot of the land use planning issues in the township. And that included Morgan McCray from the zoning board, Vida Truesdale from the Green Team, as well as your two special improvement district directors, Kat Delitt and Nicole Wallace. And that's in addition to members of the planning board who served in a sub, sort of a subcommittee capacity. On the consultant side, BFJ was the lead consultant on this team. Myself, Peter, and Christine were kind of the core group. We're all here tonight. We had a couple other folks joining us also from BFJ as well as FHI Studio. And they were very much involved throughout the process. FHI primarily focused on community engagement. They really backed us up on that and also looking closely at transportation and circulation issues.
First measure that we're going to start with is the shoulder width.
So overview of the process and the timeline, we got started, as Karen mentioned, just a little about fourteen, fifteen months ago or so, April of last year. And we really kind of spent the first six months with the committee and a lot of the data and the previous plans that had been prepared, meeting with staff, department heads, agencies, and boards and committees, and doing a deep dive into the data, often from the census, but other sources as well, to really get an understanding of Maplewood's existing context, how things have changed since the last time that the master plan was fully updated back in 2004. And what has, what has perhaps not changed? What are the trends? What was really driving some of the policies that that would be coming out of this master plan? Then after that, the first six months, we, we went to the community, we kind of presented that in the first in-person workshop last fall. And then after that workshop, we sort of pivoted to starting to look at what are the actual recommendations of the draft plan? Really from October through early spring, we were developing the overarching vision and goals and planning themes or objectives. And then the, the individual pieces of the strategies and recommendations of the plan in May. We came back to the committee, I'm sorry, to the community in two more in-person workshops in the spring and we presented the draft recommendations and then have been refining those recommendations basically ever since into the full draft plan that is before the planning board, that has been up on the township's website and is ready for public review. The sort of ongoing task throughout this process was community engagement and it sort of never really has stopped, which I think is one of the way it should be. We started talking to people early on and have really continued to talk to folks throughout, throughout the process and, you know, refining, 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 making adjustments along the way and you'll see kind of how that, that came out into play and the different tools that we, we used to reach members of the community. Okay. So just a quick recap of kind of what is a master plan. Karen touched on this. It is a document adopted by the planning board. Sort of it's their purview. It's, it's one of the main things that a planning board does. It is primarily a land use policy document, a, a, you know, a planning document for the the use of land, the future development and preservation of the built environment. It's meant to be an expression of a shared vision, so it's meant to be grounded in community engagement, a sense of what the community wants to see in terms of its built environment. It is a policy document, so it is not in and of itself a regulation or a law, but it is meant to be the basis for those laws. So there are many recommendations in this draft plan that deal with regulatory changes. Primarily zoning, but also maybe some other ones that, that the township committee would then be the body who would, who would explore those potential regulatory changes. They're the body who actually has to adopt regulation changes. So they've been very much involved in this process. When it, when it gets to them, they'll be the body that, that refused that and then they'll refer it back to the planning board, any kind of regulatory changes for master plan consistency. As Karen mentioned, it also gives guidance to a lot of different folks operating in, in the sort of space of land use decision-making in, in the township, whether that's municipal staff, other boards and committees, even the private sector, giving them a sense of what, what the township's shared vision is for the future. And it also can guide capital decision-making. A lot of the recommendations, I would say most of them in this draft plan will involve some allocation of funding. So in terms of priorities, in terms of opportunities to implement these, these recommendations, a lot of it comes down to capital investment. So it's meant to be a guidance document in that, that field as well. And you can look at the, the action table at the end of the plan almost as a to-do list. It's not necessarily a required to-do list. You shouldn't think of it as sort of ticking things off. There may be things that evolve over time that recommendations that might need to be tweaked maybe or less relevant as the years go by. And then of course, there's always new recommendations or, or issues that come up in a community. But it does give you kind of a good sense of where things stand today and things that the township might want to tackle in this land use planning space. And the last time, as I mentioned, that the township fully updated the, the master plan, a holistic, comprehensive new document was back in 2004. And the last reexamination of the master plan, which is a requirement of the state every ten years, that was done back in 2011. So we know that there have been plenty of changes that have occurred since those dates. And we tried to incorporate a lot of those changes and some things have not changed. So some things have have stayed and, and sort of been carried forward in this document. Okay, the next slide, you'll see, you know, kind of the, the elements of a master plan. These are all potential elements that you see sort of in the bottom. They could be included in a master plan. The two required elements at the top, according to state law, you have to have a statement of goals, policies, and objectives. That's also supposed to incorporate smart growth planning principles. And you have to have a land use plan. You have to have a plan that's going to guide your zoning and other land use planning and regulatory decisions. The other elements of the plan or the chapters of the plan are in large part up to the municipality and these are just some. They're not all. For example, historic preservation is a very common element and one that the township has previously adopted. And these are typically done when you look at a comprehensive, full new master plan like we're doing right now. These are, they're sort of all touched on in a fairly high level. You're looking very broadly as it's a vision document. You're going to be looking at all of these issues, but perhaps not getting into the fine level of details, which would be maybe deferred to a standalone element. So often a comprehensive master plan would recommend, as this one does, the preparation of a full new circulation element. And that type of an element would really get into the detail of specific intersection improvements, specific traffic regulation changes, things like that, you know, specific recommendations on capital investments for bike pedestrian transportation, for example. So that's sort of the, the difference between a, a sort of holistic, comprehensive new master vision plan and a very detailed programmatic element. Another element that is often required or done by municipalities is the housing element. And we know that the next round of the affordable housing requirements across the state of New Jersey is going to start in 2025. So we know that Maplewood will have to do a standalone housing element that will be guided by this master plan, but is also going to be its own distinct element. So that's sort of how it works in New Jersey and it's actually really helpful that you can update these elements individually whenever the time is right. Open space and recreation and conservation is also a very frequent standalone element that is updated more frequently perhaps than an overall master plan. Okay, so that just gives you kind of an overview of the, the content of a typical master plan. That's okay, you can keep going. So I wanted to touch on community engagement because it has been a very critical part of this master plan process. We started it back at the very beginning, pretty much of the process, early summer of last year with some pop-up events really kind of appearing at township events like Maplewood Stock, where we could kind of get, start to get the word out, have some visibility, let folks know what was happening. And primarily really letting people know that there was going to be a virtual public workshop to our meeting last summer.
There's a...
Um, so going through...
You mute yourself because we can hear you.
Yeah.
And whoever is hosting the meeting, please mute all participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so as I was saying, last summer, one of the key elements that we were working on was a virtual public workshop, which ran from July to September. It was a, an interactive platform that had different exercises that folks could do to let us know kind of at a high level what their concerns were, what some of the priorities were, what their, you know, things that they loved about Maplewood, things that they maybe don't love so much and why. And just to kind of give us, start to give us a sense of where people kind of are or were at that time and start to guide our, looking at the right lens for existing additions. As we were learning more about Maplewood ourselves, we were also hearing directly from folks about what, what they would like to share. We were supplementing all that information with township, department staff, and board and committee meetings, really kind of getting a sense of what these boards and committees and departments are doing, what their priorities are, what some of their issues of concern are. And then as I mentioned, we, we came to the public, I had an in-person meeting in October at the woodland to kind of present what we had heard that up to that date. Test it with the community. Are we hearing things right? Are we missing things? And really to, to get us to the next phase, which was the development of draft recommendations. Really throughout the process, really up until this, this past spring, we were meeting individually with different stakeholder groups and those could be very small meetings. Sometimes they were just, you know, one or two folks, but sometimes they were you know, larger groups of people, typically virtual meetings, really trying to meet with as many different broad representatives of the township as possible. We also had two briefings of both the full planning board as well as the township committee, just to get a sense of, you know, how, how they felt about where we were in the process, get their feedback on some of the initial recommendations and strategies. And that was back in the early spring this year. So I think on the next slide, you can get a taste of, of kind of who we met with. It's a long list. I'm not going to read them all, but we were really trying to touch on a lot of different topical areas, whether that's, you know, arts and culture, environmental aspects. We met with the school districts, youth, seniors, transportation advocates, special needs advocates, really running the gamut. And on a couple examples, we, a couple instances, we actually met with people more than once to kind of have some follow-up. You know, and it's all very qualitative. We were sort of taking all of this information in and continuing to refine things in, throughout the draft of the plan as we heard different things. Okay, so the next slide I think summarizes kind of key takeaways. What, what did we really hear from the community? Because I will say that we talked to, you know, at this point, hundreds of people, whether, you know, in person, online, virtual groups. But the consistency of the input that we got was pretty striking. We, we kept hearing many of the same things over and over again, which is really an indication that we were, you know, we were hearing things that people really care about. And it's not to say that everybody agreed with each other, that we, we heard the exact same thing from everyone, but we did start to hear some of the same big key takeaway. So one of them is that people really do love living here in Maplewood and, and that sounds trite. It's not. It is, I think, unique in that they, they came here for a reason. They recognize that Maplewood is different. It's not a typical suburb. It's got true diversity. It's a vibrant place. It, you know, mixes that really great urban, but also suburban lifestyle. It's, it's a, it's a unique place and that's why people came here and they really do recognize that it's a special place. You can still love a place and want it to change in some ways. So they know that there are always ways that the township can improve and they're looking for those targeted improvements. I think that there, there is an expectation and almost a demand that, that the township continues to improve itself. So they want that diversity and inclusion to be, you know, a critical part and continue to be a critical part of Maplewood's ethos. They, that's in many cases why people moved here and they want that to stay and to remain, you know, really a part of all aspects of, of Maplewood. They would like the township to strive to be, continue to be affordable and attainable for people wherever they are in life, whether they're just starting out, a new homeowner or a new renter, or they're a senior who wants to downsize in the community that they've, they've been in for decades. So that, that was a really common theme that we heard. There is a real desire to strengthen and support the local business communities, whether that's the village, Springfield Avenue, or kind of anything in between. And they, we heard a lot very, very much about walking and biking. Not to say that people aren't going to give up all their, their cars necessarily. This is the suburbs. Sometimes you need your car, but we just heard a really strong desire across the board for more options, where you don't have to have a car for safer, more attractive, more appealing options for bikes and pedestrians. We heard a lot about sustainability and resiliency. So these things go hand in hand. Sustainability is sort of the environmental, you know, trying to be green, decarbonization, things like that. Resiliency is what you've all experienced personally with things like Hurricane Ida. And these things, you know, they very much do overlap. And so there's a real desire for the township to continue to be active on these fronts and to do everything possible to make Maplewood a more environmentally friendly place, but also a safer place long-term when you think about climate change and resiliency. And then lastly, we heard a lot about just the amenities that the community offers, whether that's the parks or community facilities, community centers, and making sure that they're accessible and that they're equally high quality across the board wherever you are in Maplewood. And so as I mentioned before, all of this engagement that we heard from people in, in all forms, it really did directly shape really every aspect of the master plan. We were continuing to tweak things even up until the very end, based on what we have, you know, continued to hear from people in the meetings that we had. And that is still the case. It's still a draft, so we will continue to make changes as needed directed by the planning board, even at these, these final stages. So if you've had a chance to look at the draft plan, maybe you've got a sense of how it's organized. I just wanted to give, give a quick overview of the contents. It's got six chapters. It starts out with just a kind of an overview of the process. Kind of what I just talked about a lot, you know, the community engagement, the, the plans that were reviewed, the, you know, the overall timeline. It talks about the vision, goals, and objectives, which I'll speak to in the next couple of slides, that really do provide that foundation for everything else in the plan. The Maplewood Today chapter is the existing additions piece, which has been in some form on the township's website for quite some time, at least six or seven months. And then the real meat of the plan is four, five, and six. So it's the strategies and recommendations, which are organized by topic area, but that's really where the key recommendations are, are coming from. And there's narrative to support those as well. And then the land use plan, which I'll touch on toward the end of the presentation, is kind of graphically representing the, the land use and zoning recommendations and then also summarizing all the regulatory recommendations. And then finally, at the, the end, and some of you may have seen this as a standalone piece, it's almost like an executive summary of the plan. It just lists all the recommendations, the specific ones, tries to give a sense of a timeline and responsible party and, and perhaps maybe how, how easy or hard it might be to get these things done and a little bit of prioritization. So kind of an action item to-do list for, for the township. Okay. So as I said, the, the vision, goals, and objectives, you know, really are meant to be the foundational aspect of the master plan. It's grounded in community engagement, what we heard directly from the community. And so we still wanted to start out with the vision statement, which I will read because it's fairly brief. And I'll just go ahead. Maplewood's diversity of backgrounds, experiences, and voices. Create an inclusive community that combines suburban living and urban vibrancy. Our vision is that residents are welcome to enjoy all of the assets that make our township so attractive. An attainable home that meets their needs, high-quality neighborhoods that are resilient to climate change, excellent community facilities and services, strong connections to the region, a thriving local business community, and a wealth of historic and cultural resources. And everything is meant to sort of in some way tie back to this vision statement, as you'll see through the goals and objectives in the, the next few slides. So when we were looking at how to organize this plan around a series of goals and objectives, generally as planners, you want to have three, four, or five goals that really kind of serve as, as organizing principles of the plan. And we talked a lot early on about, you know, the concept of equity, which we were hearing a lot about from the community. And maybe that's one of the, the goals and along with some of the others like transportation. But the more we talked to people, the more we found that it's not really just one of a few goals. It's kind of the foundational guiding principle along with the vision statement. It builds from the vision statement and is kind of a bridge from that vision to the, the goals, that you really can't kind of put it alongside the others in the same mix. It's, it's such an important aspect of Maplewood. Put it along beside the others in the same mix, it's it's such an important aspect of Maplewood. And so, you know, thi- this is really getting at equity both in the planning process. And also the planning outcomes, so increasingly, we as planners in our our field are looking at planning for social equity. We're recognizing that um that for many communities, historically, planning has actually, you know, not helped them. Uh, and in some fa- in some ways, it's often harmed these communities, and so we are very cognizant and aware of that. Um, and I think Maplewood is not uh not unique in that way, um, there have been aspects of historical planning in Maplewood that probably have not been. Great for all communities, and so we are trying to be fully aware of that and ensure. Uh, both for this master plan, that the process has been equitable and will continue to be equitable when you think about things like transparency and future planning. But also that the recommendations and the outcomes of this plan are equitable across the board for for Maplewood residents. Okay, so that is really kind of a guiding principle for this plan. And you'll see how it builds to the next slide, which is the goals and principles, the goals and objectives, excuse me. Um, which is a lot of words and I won't read, if you've been to uh any of the meetings, you've seen a lot of these. Um, but really, there are three kind of overarching goals that have driven a lot of the recommendations of this plan, it's connection, quality of life and resiliency. And connection, uh, traditionally has meant physical connections, things like transportation, and you see that in the very first uh objective. You know, safe and accessible mobility for all users. Um, but it also is looking at connection between parks uh and other community facilities, and it's looking at less physical connections and more, you know, economic connections. So how are the business areas connected all to each other into the neighborhoods as well? And then social connections, um, you know, how are people experiencing uh communication from the township? How do different people experience the programs and how do we make all of that better uh and more cohesive and equitable? Quality of life deals a lot with the, just the aspects of living in Maplewood, so. Um, how how you can get a, have a house and stay in a house, so that's affordable housing for, you know, really all ages, incomes. Abilities and family types, um, it's looking at opportunities to uh to introduce targeted development. Um, that might further some of those affordable housing or other goals uh in a way that doesn't impact uh established neighborhoods. And it's looking at quality of life throughout neighborhoods, um, especially where they kind of transition to from from one density of residential use to another. Or a non-residential use, um, it's looking at arts and cultural resources as a key aspect of Maplewood and and making sure that they're supported and enhanced. Um, and then the third goal, uh, area goal is resiliency, um, and so that's, that's the green one, it tends to have anything green related in it. Um, so it's it's climate change mitigation and adaptation. Um, it's overall environmental sustainability efforts that can include waste management, that can include uh impervious coverage. And and supporting the tree canopy, we heard a lot about the tree canopy. Um, and then the impact of of development, and then there's the infrastructure. Uh, which can support both environmental efforts as well as resiliency needs. And so making sure that that's addressing Maplewood's vulnerability and that it's done, again, equitably across neighborhoods. And then lastly, this is increasingly important in the wake of COVID, um, if we're in the wake yet, we might still be in it. Um, public health, so that's another aspect of resiliency, how people can adapt and be resilient to. Things like a public health emergency, um, and how people are dealing with issues of food secure insecurity and public safety. And just their ability to access their own basic needs throughout their neighborhoods. Okay, so these are the sort of set of overarching goals and objectives that you'll see, hopefully we tie back to, uh, when we get to the actual recommendations. Okay, so I am going to turn it to Peter, uh, who is going to take us through um some of the key recommendations across these topics.
Thank you, Susan. So we're starting with land use, and um, these are just some of the, some of the key recommendations as Susan mentioned, so. We have, uh, first, uh, to maintain a strong quality of life and consistency of scale. With Maple, in Maplewood's residential neighborhoods with safe, convenient access to parks, transit and other amenities. And some representative uh recommendations, of which there's, there's more than than what you're going to see on each of these slides in the master plan, but. Some of the key ones, uh, include zoning to address the scale of new residential development. And um, this would be intended to complement the existing scale and, you know, be in. In in character and complimentary of what's already on the ground, and also a vision to take a holistic approach and be able to um incorporate. Other elements such as equity and sustainability. Um, also to expand pathways to parks and community facilities, uh, to interconnect better with the community. Uh, provide housing opportunities for residents across income, household size, ability and age groups. And some representative ways to do this would be to revisit the accessory dwelling unit regulations, um. Assess the potential to permit uh two family homes in some single family districts where appropriate. Updating rent control laws, um, and also tracking, um, the affordability controls on existing units to make sure. We know when they're going to expire and try to get out ahead of that, um, to make sure an extension could be offered if that's um something that the township's interested in doing. And also, uh, physical, um. Opportunity in terms of accessibility, um, and that's for both people with all different abilities, but also all age groups. In terms of things that are appropriate for for seniors, um, and the full full cross section of of the township. Um, also explore opportunities for strategic revitalization, including uh the use of the redevelopment's uh planning tool. Um, this would include new and revised designations, uh, for example, if you've got a plan or or. An area that's been designated and and has been sitting for a while, it might be worthwhile to revisit it, see if um, if it's an area, if the. If the sites and the extent of it still makes sense, if it's a plan, see if the bulk standards, the uses and the overall design aspects uh still make sense. Uh, next slide, please. Um, another strategy to review large scale commercial industrial nodes to ensure the appropriateness of uses. And area and bulk controls, and one example is the highway business zone, um, in terms of reducing the prevalence of that on Springfield Avenue. Um, some alternatives might be to rezone uh portions of that zone to the OB zone, the PRB zone. And the MB zone, which would kind of integrate it and, um, you know, provide a more pedestrian oriented corridor ultimately. Um, and we also have promoting a renewed focus on historic preservation, particularly particularly where it can achieve complementary goals. Um, that would include updating the bur- or the township's uh historic preservation element, which dates from two thousand eight. Um. The intent of this would be to to strike a a balance between strengthening the preservation tools. Um, and also the designation process in terms of fine tuning that process, while at the same time providing. Um, a balance of incentives and resources for property owners to make sure that they can, um. You know, actually fulfill the the requirements of the ordinance and the program overall. Um, in addition, uh, zoning to support adaptive reuse, um, design guidelines and design guidelines for historic areas. Um, essentially that would tie in with what I had just mentioned, taking a balanced approach to making sure that, um. It's holistic and all the different interests are are well served. My next slide, please. So for circulation and mobility. Um, to implement a major policy shift, uh, to prioritize walking, bicycling. Um, and other non automotive modes, uh, this would include a recommendation for a new master plan. Circulation element, and that would be envisioned to sort of elevate and rebalance, um, all the different modes. Um, elevating the non automotive modes and rebalancing with the with the auto auto oriented modes. And then that would also provide an opportunity to implement the, um, and update the bicycle and pedestrian plans, complete streets. Complete streets policy as well as the uh Vision Zero approach and other other approaches and and strategies for circulation and mobility. Um. Design roadways for safe, equitable mobility options for all users, this would include traffic calming tools such as. Um, pedestrian signalizations for crossings, narrowing crossing distances. Um, pedestrian refuges and and things like that, also establishing bike lanes at appropriate locations. And addressing problematic intersections with redesigns to try to, you know, retool them to make them uh safe for for all users. Um, this also includes expanding access to transit and micro mobility options. Uh, and of course, uh, the ADA access to the train station is uh is an important item. Uh, we'd recommend to continue dialogue with New Jersey Transit to try to get them to. You know, keep that project hopefully on the top of the pile and hopefully move that up in terms of their their pipeline of the projects they're looking at. Um, also jitney improvements and expansion. Um, and also, um, improve the the efficiency of existing and future parking resources. This would include streamlining and modernizing park parking regulations, uh, finding ways to. Optimize parking surrounding the train station so it doesn't impact uh adjacent businesses and things like that. Um, next slide, please. So for economic developments, um. Firstly, we have, uh, support small and emerging businesses to help them remain competitive in a challenging retail environment. Supporting the continued success of the two primary, primary business districts while strengthening smaller neighborhood oriented commercial nodes. And uh, this could include, is some of the recommendations include creating sub- subzoning districts on Springfield Avenue. To uh support central, the central commercial node, and it would require ground floor retail. Um, in addition, reviewing business zoning processes to support new businesses, and this could, tying in with the next bullet, um, look at. Uh, retooling the industrial zones. Um, including the commercial and industrial uh CI districts and the uh special light industrial district. Some representative new permitted uses that could be included, just to kind of freshen them up and and attract some new, um. New businesses and new, uh, new, uh, new dollars into town would be, you know, logically art galleries, maker spaces. Food production, green businesses and other businesses that that would be appropriate and uh and fit in um among those. And explore opportunities for placemaking at key locations to showcase Maplewood's creativity, generate economic activity and to build community. Next slide, please. Um, another important strategy is to support Maplewood's arts and cultural destinations as key drivers of economic development. Uh, Maplewood has a tremendous resource and is is exceptionally strong in terms of arts and cultural uh resources and destinations. So a logical thing to do would be to develop an arts and cultural strategic plan. To help organize strategies around those those strengths and, um, you know, I basically establish an implementation plan. And I'll leverage those resources. Um, continue to enhance the township's planning for economic development initiatives. This could include hiring a municipal grant writer. Uh, one of the benefits of a of a grant writer that has a focus in that specific discipline is they typically have specialized knowledge of the programs. They can make decisions as to what program would be, um, the township might be competitive for versus others. And they typically also have uh relationships with the funders in terms of being able to speak the same language and and really help, uh, help put in a a great grant application. And lastly, to pursue a branding initiative to identify, reflect and promote all aspects of Maplewood. And this would include uh developments of a branding and signage program to unify the bulk of the signage, the benches, all the different types of amenities. And and, um, uh, other streetscape elements uh around town, so you know, when when you've arrived in the township. And, uh, with that, I think for the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
Thanks, Peter. Um, all right, so I'll be walking us through, uh, the next two uh sections. Uh, the first here being community facilities, resources and programming. And this chapter has everything to do with, as the name suggests, community facilities and uh parks and open spaces. And then, uh, residences, resources and programming. And so the first one we have here, um, is to enhance, um, the existing parks and open spaces. We heard throughout the process how important Maplewood's uh open spaces is to Maplewood's identity. So ways to improve, um, the existing parks, um, in numerous ways. Uh, for example, adding benches, uh, lighting where, uh, it's lacking. Um, or updating some of those lighting features, for example, and uh also the need to, um, expand, uh, parks and open spaces. Um, if it's feasible to to, um, increase and expand this network. And, uh, recommendation within this, as you can see, um, we listed, um, in the draft plan. Some targeted improvements to parks such as, uh, Maple Crest Park, uh, the need for more lighting, um, we heard, for example. And next, um, we heard the desire to improve these connections between all the parks and open spaces. And your parks in Maplewood, as you know, they're, um, small to large, uh, size. And, um, they're primarily near residential areas, so these connections could help, um, residents access. Uh, parks and open spaces from their homes. And, uh, recommendation within this, um, is, uh, to continue the implementation of the, uh, rawway river greenway. And, uh, following this, uh, the third strategy there you see is, uh, to assess, um, Maplewood's existing community facilities. Um, we know they're well loved and well used by Maplewood residents, and, uh, there was a desire to see all of these, um. To be understood and just identify any needs and opportunities, uh, to improve, um, these spaces. Um, to ensure they're providing for Maplewood residents, um, in the future. And, uh, lastly, here on the slide, we have, um, to strengthen and expand the lines of communication. Uh, with the Maplewood community, um, so we do understand that the township has a great ePlus, uh, system. That, um, regularly post on the website, uh, updates. And, uh, we heard throughout the process that, um, their desire to, um. Just also, um, improve, um, these communications and also not only have online. Platforms but also, uh, physical, um, communication, uh, with the, uh, residents such as flyers. Uh, throughout the town or mailings for folks that are not, um. Well versed with, uh, online platforms, so they could also, uh, hear the word about events. Um, and many other items, of course. Um, and to assist the township with doing this, um, the township could consider hiring, uh, municipal, uh, communication specialist. Um, and that would also assist the township to reach, um, all Maplewood residents, uh, including those, um. That do not speak English, um, including, uh, Spanish, Haitian Creole, uh, Russian. All right, and moving along here, um, within that same chapter of community facilities here, at the top, um, we heard. That Maplewood has an extensive amount of existing programming, resources and services. To make them more accessible, uh, to all residents, um. So, uh, the first one here, a recommendation under this strategy is that, um, the township could identify, um, any gaps. Uh, in these offerings to ensure that, uh, all age groups and our all abilities. Um, have, uh, programming and resources that, um, can apply to them. And then also, the township could look into partnering with, uh, neighboring communities. As well as nonprofit organizations on, uh, programming resources and services, so there's a broader reach. And we know that, um, the township, um, does, uh, already, uh, partner with neighboring communities. And, uh, next, we have, um, to strengthen and promote, uh, community resources related to public health. Um, we understand as in other communities how COVID nineteen has definitely elevated the importance of public health. And that came out throughout the process, um, with community members that we've spoken to and, um. Um, and then, um, we understand that, uh, the township has, um, community resources, uh, to assist with public health. Including affordable, healthy food, uh, social services and wellness programs. And there's an opportunity to just, um, strengthen and make, uh, the community more aware of these, um, existing resources. And a few recommendations within this strategy, the first there is, uh, to permit and encourage grocery stores. Um, just to ensure that, um, there's access to fresh and healthy, affordable foods within, you know, walking distance for all residents. Uh, we understand that there are a few grocery stores, um, in Maplewood and mostly primarily on in the perimeter of Maplewood. And then next, um, there's also an opportunity to improve the farmer's market, to make that more accessible, uh, to all Maplewood residents. For example, um, increasing, um, the, um, operating hours as well as making sure, um. The area within and surrounding the farmer's market is ADA accessible. And then here, the last one, um, we, um, learned about the importance to partner with, uh, the South Orange Maplewood School District. Uh, to collaborate on future planning efforts, um, and this could include, um. Planning efforts, for example, on, uh, future transportation projects, uh, we did here throughout the process, um. One intersection particular by Columbia High School, Parker and Valley. Um, how, uh, challenging of intersection that is during drop offs and pickups. Um, so, um, there's potentially the township and, uh, the school district to, um. Collaborate on, uh, these projects, uh, as listed there, the safe routes to school projects as well. All right, and here we have the last, uh, chapter, um, in the plan, sustainability, infrastructure and resiliency. And the first strategy here is, uh, to foster development that focuses. And the first strategy here is to foster development that focuses on energy efficient, sustainable and resiliency practices. And first, the recommendation listed here under that is to prepare a master plan, green building and environmental sustainability element. And this element would build upon the township's current building and sustainability initiatives and then strengthen them. And the second here is to implement the community energy plan, which the township is currently undergoing. To lessen reliance on non renewable energy. And then lastly, to maintain and increase Maplewood's sustainable jersey certification. And lastly, here listed. There's an opportunity for the township to establish comprehensive waste management strategies. To assist with reducing negative environmental impacts. And an example of a recommendation here is to support Maplewood's current food composting program. We did hear an interest from the community for that to be expanded. And then lastly, also to increase whatever could be recycled currently within Maplewood. And here we have the final slide. For sustainability and the first at the top is to support. Conservation of Maplewood's environmentally sensitive areas. So this would be Maplewood's water bodies, steep slopes. Just to name a few. And the recommendation here would be to review the ordinances to ensure that they're protecting, continue to protect the. Environmentally sensitive areas. And then also an opportunity for the township to update its environmental resource inventory. And then I, yes, I'd like to mention this one actually. The township could consider acquiring properties along the flood plain. To help reduce those vulnerabilities and then also increase open space along these water bodies. And then the second strategy here is to minimize the impervious surfaces. That are primarily found on the commercial corridors with larger building footprints and large. Pavement and implement green infrastructure techniques here, just increase the open space so water could be filtered through and. Be captured underground. And now a recommendation within this, very important, we heard it throughout the process, was the need to maintain and strengthen. Maplewood's aging tree canopy and that's through maintenance as well as. Education for residents. So everyone understands the importance of maintenance, tree and care. To review the tree ordinance and potential for a shade tree commission. And lastly here, the need to rehabilitate the aging infrastructure to help support the existing development in Maplewood. And any potential development in the future. And with that, that is a preview of all the strategies and some of the recommendations within it. And with that, I will pass it on to Susan.
Great. Thank you, Christine. We have a full list in the implementation action plan of all the recommendations. As you see, many of them are closely interlinked. Are interconnected and we've tried to identify responsible parties and potential timeframes. You know, there really is a kind of a broad, broad range. I'm actually going to finish up this slide actually on sustainability, infrastructure, resiliency. You know, we heard a lot about flooding. I think Christine touched on in the last slide about the potential for actually purchasing some of those flood prone, flood prone properties. But just more broadly, we know that flooding occurs even away from those floodplain areas, just in normal heavy rains and storms. So there's some strategies that Maplewood can look at, such as creation of a stormwater utility that is now part of legislation that the state has enacted. That municipalities can create a stormwater utility to try to again capture the impact of development. And tie that back with stormwater improvements that that would help to mitigate some of the impacts of that development. We know that there are regulations that can be looked at to better capture the impact of even minor site plans or mi- minor improvements throughout Maplewood. Certainly individually, maybe one doesn't have a huge impact on stormwater, but collectively they can have an enormous impact. And we know that much of Maplewood, because of the timing of development, was built before there was really any stormwater management. So there are really a lot of opportunities there to can capture the impact of, of existing and future development. And then lastly, on resiliency, a big part of it is being resilient. Once the disaster has occurred. And being able to, to adapt and have information and education on resources, you know, in a post disaster situation. So we know that there's a lot of community planning that Maplewood has already done and is actually required to do by the state. It's really just kind of continuing that and helping make sure that the community is aware of all of these resources and basically what to do in the event of a natural disaster or similar event. Excellent. Okay. So I'm going to go through fairly quickly. The land use plan, which is, as I mentioned earlier, it's kind of the graphic representation of a lot of the recommendations that you've heard tonight. It's meant to guide the planning board in particular, but really any land use entity in Maplewood. To give a sense of, of, you know, are there zoning changes that need to be made, whether they're map changes or otherwise. So the map that you see here at the, at the right is in the plan. It basically identifies. The broad recommended land uses and it's very similar to what exists today. And I would say that's particularly the case for residential uses. So that's the first category here. We have five categories of residential designations here in Maplewood and it's largely reflective of both the existing land use and the existing zoning. So there's the low density category, which are your three single family zones. There's the moderate density, which you see particularly really along the, the eastern periphery as well as other areas too. That's, that's your two family district largely. There are a series of existing apartments, garden apartments, townhouses. And those are indicated in sort of a middle category. They are not your newer multifamily, your, your newer multifamily tend to be a little bit larger, maybe a little bit more dense. So these are perhaps townhouses or garden apartments that have existed for some time. So then you see the multifamily, which is in that brown and those tend to be, as I said, the, the newer developments. And then you do have a continuing care retirement community, which is a unique land use that we felt needed its own sort of designation. So this is kind of indicating that in large part, we expect the residential uses in Maplewood to remain pretty much intact. It doesn't mean that there are not changes that sort of happen on the ground within these areas, but in terms of your overall zoning parameters. We think they're pretty much going to stay largely as is. And you'll hear about some, some tweaks that we're suggesting within those zones and things like uses and area bulk provisions. But in terms of mapping these districts, residential districts are largely going to stay intact. Okay. Next category is business and mixed use. And here we have four categories and the way we've kind of differentiated, these are often related to the car, unfortunately, but it's kind of. How they are accessed, whether how sort of pedestrian or bike oriented they might be, whereas how dependent it might be on, on the automobile to get there. And also kind of how, how wide the reach is. So when you're looking, for example, at your primary business district, this is shown in red. On the map and it's, it's basically all of Maplewood Village and it's the sort of central core of Springfield Avenue, largely between Pearson Road. Ohio Street and Rucker Street. And that's, that's kind of currently the most intensive pedestrian oriented portion of Springfield Avenue. So these are areas that, that are highly walkable, that can be walked and reached from neighborhoods, really, you know, anywhere nearby Maplewood. And they also do tend to draw even beyond Maplewood. So there are people who come just to go out to dinner or Maplewood Village or Long Springfield Avenue, perhaps from surrounding communities. So that's really kind of your traditional core business districts. Kind of at the other end of the spectrum, you have your more auto oriented corridors. And this is really focused on kind of the gateway from Melbourne and, and Union at Melbourne Avenue, one of the western end of Springfield Avenue. We know that these areas tend to be reached by car and that's not likely to change in the near term. And so we've looked at, you know, kind of maintaining that. We have, do have some recommendations on improving those areas. But largely they'll, they'll probably remain somewhat as is. And then there are a handful of areas along Springfield Avenue. That are currently zoned highway business and kind of need to continue with that zoning because they're only allowed. And these are uses that are only allowed in that zone. So you'll see that a little bit highlighted in, in the map. Kind of in between those first two categories is the neighborhood mixed use. So this is a lot of the rest of your business areas where. They're, they're still pretty walkable and, and can be walkable and, and there's opportunity to improve that for pedestrians. They're a little bit more locally focused, a little bit more neighborhood oriented, probably attracting less of, of a wider customer base. And so you see that in portions of, you know, the rest of Springfield Avenue, Valley Street, Irvington Avenue. You know, these are very much serving the surrounding neighborhoods and, and Maplewood as a whole. And are a pretty good mix of walkable and maybe a little bit less walkable, but the, the, the goal is that they all become more walkable, mixed use districts. And then kind of at the, the sort of least intensive business use, there's a, there's a handful, maybe not even a handful of really small nodes. That are actually not even zoned for the most part as business, but they've existed for quite some time. So Ridge Wood Row is a, is a prime example. We know there's. The area Elmwood where the True Salvage Cafe is, it's a little corner node there. There's a node at Pearson and Valley. And these again have existed for quite some time. They're, they're important, we think, to support. And the last master plan, you know, I think made a conscious decision not to rezone these areas. They're basically nonconforming right now. We are recommending that they actually be allowed in the zoning districts where they are. We want to continue to support these very small nodes that are a part of Maplewood's character. So in the other key nonresidential category is industrial. You have two existing, actually three existing industrial districts. You have your CI. Your light industrial and then your special light industrial, both of those are sort of in the southeast corner. There is also a research office district on Springfield Avenue, which is only one place. It's the New Jersey Transit Hilton Bus Garage. So the recommendation here is to, you know, to largely retain your two industrial districts. You see them in purple. We'll talk about the other district in a moment. And we have some, some recommendations here about allowable uses and, and how to kind of transition these areas into maybe. Different than what they are today, but largely keeping the existing industrial areas in Maplewood. So that's shown in the purple there. And then you see throughout scattered throughout Maplewood in blue. These are your municipal nonprofit school related uses. They're really as indicated, they exist. We obviously expect them to continue to exist. And so we want to show that on the future land use plan. And then the same with the parks and open space, whether that's, you know, public owned, publicly owned land, including the South Mountain Reservation. Or private recreation such as the Maplewood Country Club. So those are shown kind of as is. Parking, you can see is public parking primarily at the train station and municipal lots near the train station and Maplewood Village and also along Springfield Avenue. And then lastly, there's a couple of specialized areas that we wanted to reflect in the future land use plan. There's the historic district. Which is the existing that covers basically the Maplewood Village area. And we are recommending actually. Mapping the affordable housing overlay, which is currently in your regulations for the Maplewood Country Club. It actually does have an affordable housing overlay requirement that exists in your regulations and that's not proposed to change. We're just suggesting actually showing that on your zoning map. Okay. So lastly, one of the requirements of the state statute says that you need to say what you're going to recommend about redevelopment. And we know that redevelopment has been a tool that Maplewood has used. In the past, in the recent past as well, to really facilitate revitalization of, you know, challenging sites or areas. So there are a few recommendations on redevelopment. We do recommend looking at a potential new redevelopment designation along the Melbourne Avenue corridor. Again, at that kind of gateway area that's highway business. We think that there's a lot of opportunity to improve the aesthetics there, make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly. And doing that in cooperation with your adjacent municipalities and Union and Melbourne. It's really kind of a cohesive corridor that is in three different municipalities. So looking at a sort of a holistic planning exercise there. And similarly in the Irvington Avenue Business District, where we know that that abouts City of Newark as well as Township of Irvington. There have been some planning initiatives that sort of started before COVID, I think kind of got paused. But looking at, you know, how to make that a cohesive business district that is more vibrant, perhaps more pedestrian friendly. And even looking potentially at a special improvement district in that area. We think redevelopment could be a helpful tool there. We know that there are always individual sites that may come as opportunities. And one of those is being studied right now by the township. It's the former movie theater site. So basically the recommendation is to, to continue that study and designation process. And then there is an existing redevelopment area, which is found off of Springfield Avenue that was designated some time ago, but nothing has really occurred since then. And we think it's ripe to be revisited. And then lastly, basically the entire Maplewood Village area would qualify as an area need of rehabilitation, rehabilitation, which is a little bit different than redevelopment. Rehabilitation, we think for Maplewood Village would focus especially on the public realm, streetscape improvements, some of those public improvements that, that, that might be difficult to achieve. You know, in a holistic way again. So it's, we think it's worth looking or considering a rehabilitation designation in Maplewood Village. Again, primarily to accomplish some of those public realm improvements. Okay. So, you know, corollary from the future land use plan is recommended zoning map changes. And there are not many, but we kind of have touched on some of them. So for the business zones, we talked about reducing the scale of the highway business zone. Along Springfield Avenue, we think that there are other zoning districts that make better sense for a lot of the portions of Springfield. It would not disappear, the HB zone. There are portions of the corridor that it still makes sense, but this would kind of continue the transition of Springfield Avenue into more of a pedestrian oriented corridor. There is a portion of Valley Street that is office business, which is generally a little bit more auto oriented than neighborhood business. So we think, again, the transition of Valley Street should be more toward pedestrian activity. So that's a recommendation there. I spoke about the RO district, which is only in that one location of the transit, New Jersey Transit Bus Garage. Probably makes sense to be just pulled into one of the other two industrial zones. It's, it's a little bit less in keeping with an office zone. It's, it's got some industrial components as well. And then there is a portion, I think on Donald Road, near Memorial Park, which is in the current PS district, I think it's Parkside Zone. Basically, we're suggesting making Valley Road a consistent neighborhood business zone to, you know, kind of recognize the cohesive nature of that whole corridor. For your industrial zones, you've got two of them and we're suggesting maybe thinking about consolidating it to one. There's very little difference between the two. And you could be, be taking again, a more comprehensive look, your overall industrial zoning. Parks and open spaces, a lot of communities have moved toward actually zoning their parks for that use. And that's something that we think Maplewood should consider. For example, De Hart Park is an industrials, in, in an industrial zone. It's obviously protected. It's on the Green Acres list, but we think it's helpful just to show that in, in your zoning as well, to make that an open space designation. And then I mentioned this earlier, actually mapping the affordable housing overlay on the country club property, basically just to reflect the existing regulation. So that's basically it for the map changes. We do have a handful and only a few more slides of regulatory changes. Which we think are things that the township should definitely be looking at. And a lot of these can be done fairly simply and quickly. Because they're fairly low cost items. So across the board, we think that the township should be routinely reviewing ordinances that relate to land use. Particularly as they relate to environmentally sensitive areas. We think that there are a handful of revisions that should be looked at for the tree ordinance and there, those are detailed in the draft plan. Really trying to get at again, protecting and enhancing that tree canopy. And particularly in areas of the town where it's lacking. We know that in the Hilton neighborhood, for example, the tree canopy is significantly less, significantly less than other portions of Maplewood. We want to try to build that back up. Impervious coverage, we think there's opportunity to again, review the code. We talked a little bit about stormwater management, adding that requirement for minor site plans as well as the significant major ones. And then when you have a large institutional multifamily uses, looking at things like buffering. Noise performance standards, making sure that there's a good neighbor approach happening there. Okay. So that's kind of across the board for regulatory changes. Looking specifically at the residential zones, Peter spoke about context sensitive regulations. We have some recommendations that would get at, you know, the scale of new houses. We know that that's a concern. It's not unique to Maplewood. We're seeing it everywhere. Houses are getting bigger. And so how to accommodate, you know, sort of modern needs and desires with. Obviously maintaining existing scale of neighborhoods. There's some zoning recommendations there. On the flip side, we want to make sure that existing homeowners are, you know, have incentive to keep their properties up and to make. You know, continued improvements. So we want to make sure that we're not disincentivizing that by requiring variances for, for fairly minor things. So we think there's an opportunity for the township to be looking. For fairly minor things. So we think there's an opportunity for the township to be looking at some tweaks there to make it a little bit easier for homeowners. Um, noise, lighting, um, those are things that can always be looked at. There is new technology. Particularly particularly with lighting that can be looked at to reduce, um, you know, negative impacts of lighting, for example. We talk a lot in the plan about density and scale and how to uh perhaps in introduce. Some, you know, some infill, small multifamily, um, that's sort of missing middle housing, if you've heard about that, how to introduce that in transition zones. So where um where neighborhoods, single family neighborhoods bump up against um. Other types of uses, for example, uh business. Um, and there's some opportunities there to, you know, to very carefully and contextually introduce some of these um these. You know, different types of of residential options there. Um, the ADU accessory dwelling unit regulations, we think are a good opportunity for Maplewood. They were put into place a few years ago. Um, we think now is a good time to revisit them and make sure that they're not unintended barriers there, um, to make sure that homeowners and property owners can take advantage of those. Um, so that's across all residential zones, specific to the low density, single family zones. Um, and this is an area that is going to require, I think, more study uh and more um planning process, but. We do see an opportunity to think about where two family homes might be uh appropriate. Um, beyond the traditional two family zone. That is a housing type that we think is is very beneficial. For people who are perhaps just starting out, um, or homeowners who perhaps, um, you know, can't afford a. A full single family home, or they just want a different type of housing. It's it's a way to kind of broaden. Um, the housing opportunities in Maplewood. And we think there are opportunities where you have the room, you have the lot lot size that can accommodate it. Maybe it's on a, you know, a more significant streets. That's something that we definitely think Maplewood should be looking at. Um, and then within the R two four zone. Right now, there is a minimum lot requirement of two acres for multifamily development. That requirement doesn't exist. Uh, in other areas, um, it's only in that that one zone, and it actually is not achievable anywhere in that zone. So uh, we're recommending taking another look at that, um, either reducing the requirement or or maybe even thinking about eliminating it. Um, to promote again, that sort of targeted appropriate, um, you know, small multifamily development. So moving on to um the multifamily type of zones. Um, I think Peter spoke about this earlier. You have a fair amount of existing apartments, a lot of them in the garden apartment style. They've been there for some time. Um, they tend to be more affordable because they're, you know, a little bit older. Um, and so one thing that we're recommending is looking at, um, are there incentives for the owners of those apartments to actually de-restrict them? Uh, for affordable housing. It's a great way for the township to get some credit for your affordable housing. Uh, obligation, but uh in a way that doesn't require new construction. Um, so it could be a win-win. Um, if you you can use your housing trust fund monies to. Essentially incentivize uh that deed restriction. And then you always want to make sure that wherever you do have deed restricted affordable housing, you want to try to continue that. Um, as as they expire, to make sure that you're continuing to get credit uh for that, for those um those affordable units. And then lastly, with your one continuing care retirement community, the Winchester Gardens, we're just thinking ahead to the fact that in a year and a half, you're going to need a new housing element and fair share plan. Uh, in order to meet your state obligated obligations. So um, looking at places like Winchester. The Gardens, which has some underutilized undeveloped areas, that might be uh an interesting place to uh to approach them for interest in. Um, some small scale targeted affordable housing uh units. Okay, it would be similar to on the approach taken at the country club. Okay, so that's residential. We'll move on to quickly. Um, and I think we only have three slides left. I know we want to give opportunity for questions here. Um, business zones, we spent a lot of time talking about uses and just making sure that for economic development purposes that. Um, we're really being broad and we're we're trying to support different types of uses. Um, that could be experiential retail, so. Things that are more uh like less less traditional retail and more about the actual experience. Sometimes these are um difficult to kind of fit into an an existing zoning category. So we want to make sure that, you know, Maplewood is taking kind of a broad view. Um, thinking about um how uh businesses might transition from one permitted use to another. For the classic example is a. Retail store that wants to become a restaurant, and sometimes there are new requirements um that they're in place. They have to come back to a board. And so that that can become an onerous, um, you know, process for them. Um, we heard, you know, the need for access to public health, access to health uh opportunities. So we want to make sure that doctors' offices, but also. Urgent care facilities, um, which are increasingly uh a valuable asset, you know, in the healthcare spectrum. We want to make sure that they're allowed in all business zones. Um, wherever there may be storage of of materials that's happening as your kind of primary use, we think that's probably not the best use of space. To promote uh business environment, so we make sure that that's not not allowed. And then Christine spoke about this before food, uh, so access to healthy and fresh food. Um, just making sure that that these uses are allowed. Uh, in business districts. And then when you have significant new development, like an apartment building where the ground floor uh is available. Um, perhaps doing what what the township can to encourage uh a grocery store or similar use uh in that space to serve the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the PRB zone, which is all along Springfield Avenue, there are opportunities here to adjust some of the setbacks. To, you know, kind of focus the the bulk of buildings on the avenue rather than next to uh the neighborhoods. Um, and we think that'll also contributes to the greater pedestrian scale and environment on Long Springfield Avenue. Okay, so continuing with business uh and industrial zones. So we talked about the highway business zone um and reducing that on Springfield Avenue, but it is still proposed to to uh remain in some areas. So where it does remain, um, we think there are opportunities to continue to refine that zone and make sure that it's um. You know, it's a stronger aesthetic uh environment uh and that it's less impactful for pedestrians. Um, Peter spoke about this earlier about the industrial zone. We are starting to see some, you know, some changes. That are happening already kind of on the ground uh in in the industrial zones, and we think there are opportunities to introduce. Um, perhaps broader uses there. The examples here are, you know, art galleries, anything kind of food production related. Um, limited retail, I think we we are very cognizant that if you allow. All retail and any kind of restaurants, it could very quickly start to morph into just another business area. And we know that there are. Longtime industrial uses there that have jobs that do serve the community. We want to make sure that those are not being kind of pushed out. And similarly, we know that there are um residential uses that are in that zone. And so. Actually, a recommendation is to rezone those existing ho- homes, many of which are two family homes. Into a residential zone so that that those uh more affordable options are not lost. And then lastly, for industrial areas, um, there's uh just an opportunity for more green related businesses. So these can be things like indoor agriculture, which are. Sometimes, um, you know, appropriate for like larger, high ceiling buildings. Anything related to to, you know, battery, uh EV type uses all need support. Uh, recycling, um, these types of things, we think they're only going to be more in demand, um, and they need to be carefully looked at. In terms of um whether there are conditions that need to be put into place to address any impacts, but there is. An opportunity there, um, we think in some of the industrial areas to allow those types of uses. Okay. Last chapter of the plan, as I mentioned, is the implementation action plan. This is just one page from there. Um, you tried to identify the type. Of act- action, whether it's um, you know, zoning or similar regulatory change, whether it's um, you know, just a partnership of an ongoing policy. Uh, whether it involves capital spending, uh whether it's something that needs more study. And a lot of these, we think, you know, could start out as further study and then become something like a capital expenditure or partnerships. There may be multiple phases here. We've also tried to indicate, um, you know, general timeframe. And you can see many of them are ongoing. Some of them at least um have aspects that are somewhat short term. Township could get started, you know, sooner rather than later. Some of them are going to require additional study, additional investment. Um, so this is just really trying to give the township a bit of a roadmap. Um, and not not binding Maplewood to do anything in any particular order, but um just giving them a sense of of how they might start to tackle some of these. Okay, I think this is our final slide. Um. Next steps before we open it up to questions. So the draft plan is available for public review. It's online. Uh, I hope many of you have taken a look at it already. There are hard copies also available um at the municipal building as well as the adult services library. The planning board doesn't intend to keep the public hearing open, so it's not your final opportunity. And we will not be giving this presentation again on July eleventh. Um, I believe the eleventh will just be to hear um directly from the community. So. We wanted to make sure that we gave this overview tonight, um, but. The bulk of tonight as well as July eleventh really is about hearing uh questions and comments from the public. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to Karen to MC.
Thank you. Thank you for that lovely presentation and all the hard work you've done and the 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 working draft. Um, which just outlet outlines a lot of great recommendations uh for Maplewood. Um, so at this time, uh, I would like to open it to members of the planning board only. For questions for the BFJ team, uh, comments for the BFJ team. Um, and so, uh, I guess we'll work with the raise your hand function and try to keep this orderly. So is there anyone who would like to start? All right, council, uh, township committee woman Adams, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, really, I just wanted to, well, first of all, thank you. You guys have listened to a lot of residents and a lot of meetings and. That's not lost on us and how much work that is and how much to uh. Consider while you're doing this, but um, the one thing I just like stuck out to me as somebody who's been doing downtown. Management redevelopment for twenty-five years or more. Um. I I had some concern about the recommendation about the branding and making everything look the same, which is. Pretty much the opposite of downtown revitalization strategy. I get like a brand to brand. Uh, a district or a downtown or a town, but not necessarily uh making everything the same. Um, because I kind of, so that that part just hit me and um, I meant to mention it. Yeah, the first time I heard it.
Yeah, and that's one, thank you, council, uh, committee woman, excuse me, um. That is one that we've heard some some trepidation about, and I think um it it's it's not meant to make everything look the same. It's thinking about things that occur, perhaps township wide, like. Parks. So the fact that your parks kind of have a range of different signage. Um, you know, when you look across town and and maybe if you had a sort of consistent park signage, consistent, you know, street signs, it doesn't mean that. Um, you know, the village might have something additional that they put on some of their signage. Uh, or similarly with Springfield Avenue, it's it's thinking about things that occur, you know, sort of across Maplewood. Having some consistency, but then room within that to uh to identify different. Districts or or neighborhoods, if that makes any sense. And I I think the parks example is kind of the the primary one. Um, when you, when you just look across and and I think we did hear from folks. Particularly to parks, um, you know, where I live on one side of town and I don't feel like I can go to the other side. It's not really my park. And so we think that that kind of goes with, you know, this is all Maplewood. And wherever you are in Maplewood, it's your park. And having a little bit of consistency um kind of makes that message, we think, a little bit clearer. But um, but we hear you. Uh, we don't want to override all the work that that your Cids have done or are continuing to do. Um, we don't want to kind of. Blanket that with a new, you know, holistic Maplewood brand. It's just a little bit strategic, thinking about things that are happening, kind of, you know, township wide.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think um, I think maybe a little more clarity in the message in the plan would um. Because your explanation was better than what I've heard in presentations.
Great, thank you. We'll we'll try to make sure that's very clear.
Great, thank you.
The members of the planning board, who would like to go next?
Yeah, find my raise the hand feature, Chair Peshoda.
Oh, please go ahead, Mr. Frye.
There there are, there are multiple additional plans recommended. Uh, I count at least seven. Um, and these are important, I guess, subsets to the master plan. Um, and and I don't know if this is a question maybe more towards the. Uh, the members of the Master Plan Committee than to BFJ, but is there an implementation? Uh, plan for these other plans, the historic preservation element? The open space and recreation, the circulation, parking. Arts and cultural, green building, environmental sustainability. I know they all have kind of different stories, but um, can somebody respond to how those play in to this uh? Master plan effort?
So in in some ways, that's going to depend a lot on funding, uh, Tim. But we did identify, there's a page in the plan that that kind of identifies some of the. Um, we would say probably top priorities, at least based on what we heard. Doesn't mean that the township couldn't do something else first. But of those, I think the circulation element comes out pretty strongly. Um, as something that we we just heard so much interest in bike, ped, pedestrian, bike uh transportation, the jitney, just. Really kind of anything mobility related across the board, that we think that's probably one of the more important ones. Um, and certainly there's, you know, there's a lot of grant funding available uh for circulation elements and planning. Um, I think. We're also hearing increasingly that historic preservation is probably pretty high on the list. Um, it's been quite some time since the township adopted that plan back in two thousand eight. So that is something that we think is very much ripe. Um, and again, um, there are grants available for that as well. Um, the housing element is something that you're going to have to do in the next year and a half, so you're not going to have much. Choice on that. You actually, I think, can use your housing trust fund monies for housing planning. So that is a little bit maybe less of a capital outlay. Um, but those three, um, probably to my mind are are. Maybe top of the list. It doesn't mean that you can't, um, you know, you can't take action on some of those other things. And even in the ra- realm of sustainability, if you don't want to go the full route of. Of a whole green element and sustainability element. We think that there's a lot of um studies and plans that you could do in that space. And again, and there are, there are lots of grant opportunities um within that field. Those are kind of the 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 biggies in in our mind. Ultimately, it's going to be really up to the the township committee, I think, to um to lead some of that timing and along with the planning board.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Frye? That you wanted to share or or ask about?
Um, I do, but I'll defer. I see Mr. Carlson has got his hand raised.
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Frye, I was just wondering, are you looking for or hoping to find a single overarching plan? For all the six or seven others?
Well, I I suppose ideally all of these plans would be. Updated at the same time as the master plan and be a part of one comprehensive document. Um, that said, I understand they're on different schedules already and they have different cost parameters. Um, I think we probably have different opinions over which are priorities and which are not, but. Um, I suppose that conversation will be ongoing.
Because it, hmm, just my take on the question you posed is that, is that. There are various things we identify in the master plan. That are not at the same level of of being formative, not uh being formed and 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 codified. And what's important is that we get the underlying policy goal or principle identified. The planning can take place, funding, all that going forward. That's my personal take on it.
That is. Thank you, Tom.
You want, one thing that we are discussing a bit internally today and and something that many communities do, uh, is they actually um. Formulate a master plan committee um that's somewhat ad hoc, uh, you know, and can kind of take a lead, and it could include members of the planning board and the governing body as well as others. Uh, if it's something that Maplewood wanted to do to sort of take you to the next step, so um. Help you implement some of these items and think about priorities. Um, it's something that, you know, many other communities have done that. Um, and it's it it's not necessarily a permanent committee. It might just be the first, you know, year or two after adoption of the plan. Just to kind of get you on track. That could be something that that you consider.
Mr. Carlson, did you have anything else that you wanted to comment on or ask about?
Uh, no, not not right now.
Okay. Are there other members of the planning board who want to share comments on the plan or ask questions of the folks from BFJ? All right, Mr. Frye, were there other things you wanted to? Um, comment on or?
Sure. Y- yes, I have a couple of other quick ones.
Sure.
I I appreciate the um, the depth of ideas. And recommendations in the master plan and and um, and thanks to all of those that have contributed. There's really a lot of. Lot of wonderful uh stuff here to work with. I I'm concerned that. It's not really prioritized um in any. You know, rigorous way, but many of the recommendations are. Are short term or ongoing. Um, is there a way that we could get more specific? Is there a way that we could get more specific about the urgent or priority items?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's always a challenge, right? Because, you know, we did, we do have a page or two of narrative that we think kind of highlights some of the higher priority areas. To some extent, that's going to be driven a little bit by governing body, again, and the planning board, and it's hard to kind of commit you to a course of action. And whereas, you know, there may be grant monies that come available for something that might be officially on the lower priority list, but the money is available now. So you want to be able to sort of strike while the iron's hot. So it's definitely a balance of trying to, you know, indicate what we heard from the community in terms of priority, but also not in any way limit the township. So we can take a look at that, you know, that priority discussion. It kind of, it directly precedes the Action Plan Table. If you want to take a look at it, and I think we'd also be looking for guidance from the planning board as to what, you know, what you think are the top priority areas. We we definitely have some ideas about some tweaks to make already to that that text that we we can discuss with you all. But if you, I guess, in advance of the July eleventh meeting, if you want to give some more thought to to things that you think are high priority. And some things might not be considered maybe high priority, but they're very much doable. And so I'm thinking, for example, and it doesn't mean it doesn't, it doesn't mean it's not priority, but for example, one of the recommendations was creating a disability advisory committee, right? That's something that the Township Committee could do, like basically immediately. It's just an advisory committee. So is that the most critical, you know, recommendation in the whole plan? Probably not, but it is something that is is quite achievable. And so that might be, you know, you might think about the timing of that, something like that, or any kind of advisory committee or, you know, sort of low hanging fruit, low costs could be done very quickly, even if it's not, you know, an imminent priority, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I think those are the kind of things that can help build momentum and lay the foundation for other more costly efforts. But I I know it was not a part of the purview of this project to price all of your recommendations, so you you don't have the benefit of costing, you know, having cost data on each of these recommendations, but I I do think just for master plans to be actionable, it's good to have, you know, a top list of priorities that we can all rally my mind. And to the extent that that's feasible, and I'm I'm happy to offer my list.
That's perfect.
Off line.
Thank you. All right, before we open it up to members of the public, just one last opportunity, if there's anyone from the planning board who wants to ask anything or or share their thoughts on the draft. All right, not seeing any, then we will go ahead and open it to members of the public. Please use the raise your hand function, and we'll try to get to everyone in an orderly fashion. Mr. Craig, oh, and and when I do call on you, if you would please state your name, especially if it's different than what's on the screen, and and your your address here in Maplewood. Mr. Craig Miller had indicated in the chat that he was interested in talking, so I'm going to start with Mr. Miller. I don't see you. Oh, there you are. So please go ahead. Oh, I can't hear you. Hold on. No, I can't hear you.
Right, it feels like your mute button is opposite. Try to mute it and then talk and see if that works.
Right.
Nope.
No, they're both. No, let me try to unmute you. Hold on. I don't know if I can. No, I can only ask you to unmute. Unfortunately, I I can't hear you. Maybe the volume might need to be adjusted. Oh, yeah, Mr. Miller. But none of us, there isn't anyone who can hear him, correct? Okay, so it's not just my my volume. Mr. Miller, perhaps if you get out of the meeting, which I think you might be doing now, and then get back and then get, oh, no, you're still here. Perhaps if you log out and log back in. I don't, I don't know if that'll work, but I'm going to move on to someone else, but hopefully we'll be able to come back to you. So I'm going to turn to Mr. Stephen Jaffe. Again, if you please state your name, if it's different than what I've said, and your address. And you're on mute as well.
Okay, can you hear me?
There we go. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Steve Jaffe. I live at thirty Bowden Street. And some of this may be, this will be brief. I'm going to read some comments. It may be a little granular and narrow for for the master plan session, but hopefully it you'll see the the relevance. I'm a professional historian and curator. For example, currently, I'm working on projects for the Museum of the City of New York and the New York State Museum in Albany. I have been a Maplewood resident for twenty-seven years. I want to endorse the efforts to strengthen historic preservation. I know this is on many minds right now. As I understand it, this includes a proposal for mandatory review of all demolition plans for buildings over a certain age. I also endorse the encouragement of adaptive reuse. I do have two specific concerns. One is about backing up ordinances with enforcement. As recent events suggest, some developers will demolish historic buildings and landscapes with impunity, calculating that their profit will far outstrip whatever penalties they incur for violating ordinances. The only deterrent, it seems to me, will be meaningful, meaning hefty fines or bans or other legal penalties. Second, I understand that there are about forty pre-Civil War buildings in Maplewood, but that only a small number of them have received historic preservation designation. For that matter, there are also a number of buildings that postdate that period that have outstanding historic or architectural value. Surely, there has to be some way to prevent these buildings from being demolished without impeding the desires of owners, the understandable desires of owners, to make them attractive and livable, so that in essence, ways to incentivize preservation would seem to be called for. This may not be the time or place to say this as I end my comments, but for what it's worth, you know, I've never been involved with the Historic Preservation Commission in town. But, you know, if there's a pro bono voluntary way for me to be of help, I'd be very much interested in learning how to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Next, I'd like to turn to Doug Greenfeld.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Doug Greenfeld. I live at six ninety-two Valley Street in Maplewood. I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner. Please do not put the two parcels along Pearson Road at Valley Street in the local retail node. Please keep them in the residential zone without any, without an overlay retail node zone. The two parcels, also known as the historic Pearson's Mill, are not like the other areas that are proposed for local retail nodes or retail nodes. The other areas were built in a style that is suitable for a main street shopping district, retail storefrontages close to the street, abutting the sidewalk, and some even have sidewalk cafes. By contrast, Pearson's Mill was built almost two hundred years ago as a three-story grist mill with several outbuildings that face in multiple directions. The main mill building that faces Valley Street has a sizable front lawn and is set back well, set well back from the street. The parcel that abuts Valley Street and contains the main mill building was converted to a multi-use commercial building over twenty years ago, following the Zoning Board of Adjustments' approval of the adaptive reuse. It is currently a vibrant, mixed-use commercial building that retains the bulk and aesthetic of the original grist mill. It also has a lot of free on- and off-street parking available, unlike the other districts. There is no retail at this site, and the zoning board resolution specifically prohibits restaurants. The two parcels along Pearson Road at Valley Street are unique, and the town should not apply standards that make sense for retail nodes to this site. The zoning board approval for the Valley Street property still prevails and should not be undermined by a rezoning to a retail node conditional use overlay. If anything, the complex of buildings should be designated as an historic district to prevent teardowns and uncomplimentary additions. Our concern is that if this complex of buildings is placed in the local retail node or retail node, that it will open the door to unsuitable uses, teardowns replaced by unsightly buildings, and increased intensity of use, unsuitable signage, excessive lighting, noise, large bulk and/or just ugly buildings. Keeping the complex of buildings in the residential zone sets an appropriately high bar for any reuse of the site. So the specific ask is to remove the two parcels along Pearson Road from two places, from the local retail node map on page one twenty-nine and the retail node narrative on page one thirty-one. I have two other much shorter, or a few other much shorter comments. And Susan, in your presentation, you discussed exploring permitting two family homes as conditional uses on main streets, which I think is generally a good idea with the one modification that I would suggest that they focus within close walking distance of retail shops and services rather than on main streets, so that you're not increasing automobile traffic as much. Another comment specifically on page eighty-six, there is a reference to the former movie theater site in Maplewood Village, and you said the word site makes it seem as if there is a vacant lot there. Please clarify that is the former movie theater building and that the rest of the building is otherwise occupied by thriving and popular retail businesses. And then a couple of minutia, because, you know, I like transportation, Susan. Page eighty-nine, reference to strengthening the town's twenty-twelve complete streets policy. Please also state that the town should look at the New Jersey DOT model, complete and green streets policy for guidance as it strengthens its own complete streets policy. And finally, on page ninety, the recommendation for, as it pertains to complete streets, I would suggest that there be a recommendation added to institute the use of checklists by town officials, primarily engineering staff, for compliance with complete streets requirements for planning capital and repaving projects. And a great model for these checklists is contained in the Essex County Master Plan Circulation Element. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Karen, if I could just follow up on Doug's first comment, I want to make sure we're clear. And I don't think it was clear in the presentation, although it sounds like you looked at the narrative in the plan too. On the retail nodes, the recommendation is not a rezoning. They would stay in the residential zones. Basically, they would just be permitted as conditional uses, anything that existed. And we can look at ways to ensure that that means adaptive reuse and not, you know, just because the use exists, doesn't mean you tear down the building and can build something bigger. The intent really for all of those, but I would say particularly Valley and Pearson was to maintain what's there. So that would be the intent of making those now permitted conditional uses, basically keep keep them satisfied, if that makes sense.
Right. So my point is that any general language that applies to all the districts would not be appropriate for the Thank you.
Thanks.
And but also, and this is an important point, the zoning for its resolution, that is the controlling regulation for the site. So as soon as you change the regulation, you're undermining the regulation for the site. Thank you.
Michelle, sorry, Michelle, can you mute yourself?
Oh, I didn't know I was making noise.
Yeah, a little bit. Thanks.
I see that Mr. Miller rejoined the the meeting. Mr. Miller, can we hear you now? Could you say a few words? Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize for my technical difficulties before.
That's okay. That's quite right. Please, please give us your address and then go ahead with your questions or comments.
Craig Miller, five oh two Prospect Street. It's wonderful to live in a community with so many civically engaged people. And the outreach is really what makes the township the sort of place that I've lived in for a quarter of a decade and hope to stay for a very long time. I'd like to address the treatment of the country club. The the country club is in a crucial position relative to the floodplain. It it's a very large, open space in town, but it's not Memorial Park. And it's referred to passively as the country club. And I think it's useful for the planning board, the township committee, and the community to recognize that the country club is a privately owned organization. Its owners, its ultimate owners are not transparent, but there should be no mistaking that there are real people who ultimately will benefit if the land is allowed to be sold. Historically, in my opinion, and I recognize others may have differing opinions, the country club has had a very privileged existence in the town of Maplewood over the last several decades, in my opinion. It's benefited from paying property taxes at rates that are significantly, significantly lower than you, I, our neighbors pay as residents with houses. I believe, although others may disagree, that this results from the perception that because it's in a floodplain, it's not susceptible to development and therefore is assessed accordingly. That's been a significant privilege for a private enterprise. I also believe that for reasons that are not clear, it's in more recent periods, it's also been privileged in other ways. For example, one of the regulations the Township Committee promulgated prohibits gas leaf blowers. But there's an exception for massive gas-powered leaf blowers upon various properties, including the country club. Now, I'm not speaking to that, and I could see why there are good reasons for it. But I mentioned this to help center the discussion and hope to focus members of the community on what's happening at the potential zoning of the country club. There's a lot of recognition of its ecological importance, but it is a private club. And historically, if township members or planning board members were asked, in my personal experience, when they were asked, can there be development at the country club, the answer has been historically, no, it can't really happen because it's in a floodplain. Now, whether that should change or not is an important question. And I think the the work of the planning board and the consultants in addressing this is important. I think it's worthwhile for the community to look into the history of what the consultants are talking about in terms of regulations that quote, were not reflected on the map, but now should be reflected. On the map, but now should be reflected on the map. And to to better understand why a very significant parcel in town. Uh, that's has a central importance to stormwater. And the overall beauty of the community, why that regulation, if it was properly passed. Uh, and it it was never reflected on the map. Uh, I've spent most of my career in business transactions, dealing with, uh, value to, uh, people and transactions. Uh, and there there's also that the discussion that's, um. Subrosy here of potentially buying out the, uh, vulnerable areas. Uh, a- areas that are vulnerable to flooding, and I think the country club would, uh, fit, uh, that description.
Um, Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller, wh- while this while this narrative is helpful and and of of interest. Um, we do have a number of people who want to comment, so.
I'll bring it to a conclusion. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I in in short, uh, the there's been incremental discussions of changing the zoning. Uh, in ways that, um, the township, the committee, uh, should examine. How value will be transferred from, uh, the taxpayers, the residents of the town to the owners. Of the country club, uh, with our eyes wide open, uh, and not let something passively happen. Uh, it's it's a very large parcel. It's important for many reasons. And I would urge people to really understand the history of the zoning. And the value that might be attributed to this before the planning board, uh, passes something that sounds. Um, anodyne. It it's not, this is a very significant issue. And you don't know who the value would be transferred to at at this meeting, so I would encourage a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Uh, and now I'm going to. Oh, did someone want to respond?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just one brief thing, just because based on, um, what Mr. Miller said, I just want to clarify for the record. Um, regarding, um, the exemption of, uh. A certain type of blower, turbine blower, um, buffalo blower that is, um. Exempted from enforcement with regard to gas powered leaf blowers. That was, um, a piece of equipment. That, um, is not otherwise available in a green alternative. And for now, we've exempted it just for that use. It wasn't necessarily just for the country club, so I just don't want that to get muddied into, um. What Mr. Miller was saying with regard to, um, the country clubs, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. That's very helpful, Ms. Adams. Um, so now we will, uh, open the floor for Ms. Kathy Rowe. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rowe, uh, four two five Richwood Road, and, um. I want to thank you. This has been very detailed, um, as a former employee of the town that worked with age friendly. I especially want to thank you for including older adults and so much of your focus. Um, I think that you really hit the nail on the head for getting the the personality of Maplewood, which is why I'm. Sorry to express my disappointment that, um. While historic preservation have very, very low ranking in the initial feedback you gave. It's been elevated so high and you met with Historic Preservation Commission and none of the older homeowners. Were included in these discussions yet. Um, I'm offering again to host a meeting. Several of the historic homeowners met recently. And one of the things that we would like to see are policies that are holistic and impact everyone. Um, a holistic strategy can prevent teardowns and overdevelopment throughout the town, not just our ours eight specific lots. For example, I look out my seventeen forty three built doorframe and look at an oversight McMansion that's going up across the street. So zone restricting a few houses while others can do that is is not. I don't think in the interest of in of keeping the fabric of the neighborhoods. And I agree with, I think it was Steve Jaffe who was talking about, um. You know, realistically, making it clear that it's not worth, it's not worth the fines or or making the fines higher to discourage this happening. For other places. Um, we have several examples of good teardowns. There was a lot of noise a few years ago. It's a house at the corner of Baker and Valley. And, you know, people were afraid of what would be put in there, and I was looking for it the other day, and I honestly can't. Remember which house it was because it blends in with the rest of the neighborhood. There's also a house on either Duran or Woodland, which was torn down, built again with, um, universal design so that handicapped. Or disabled family members can easily use the property. It blends into the neighborhood like it was always there. So a larger holistic strategy, instead of focusing on a few houses, can do a lot to revert to preserve the fabric of the neighborhood. Um, and something that you had in the draft is that, um, to bring in more funding for the Historic Preservation Commission. Something that we've asked for for sixteen years is how about some help for the historic homeowners? Help was offered when Maplewood Village was designated historic. Um, it can be done, an emergency fund, something, anything to help with. The maintenance to offset this responsibility that we're bearing because we are privately funding was perceived as a public good. And we get no voice and we get no relief. Um, that may have been able to prevent the teardown on Parker Avenue that's gotten so much attention recently. But I think that treating can giving consistent policies that affect all the houses will really preserve, will prevent teardowns. Preserve the look of Maplewood and make it holistically a more attractive place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rowe. Uh, now we will turn to Mr. James Nathanson. Please go ahead.
Um, thank you. Uh, kudos to BFJ for a thorough and thoughtful presentation. Guys have done a lot of work and it's greatly appreciated. I've got a question, um, and a comment. Um, in your presentation, Susan, you talked about, um. Uh, a possible recommendation to designate all of Maplewood Village as an area in need of rehabilitation. There is a current study proposal, uh, for a block of Maplewood Village. To become, uh, a designated as an area in need of redevelopment. Could you just sort of elucidate? I mean, I I was on the planning board for thirteen years and was a vice chair for about eight. So I'm somewhat familiar with these rules, but I'd like your point of view about why one would do one strategy versus the other.
Yeah, um, you know, our our. Our understanding and approach of redevelopment is that, you know, if you're if you're interested in potential, uh, you know. Significant renovations or new construction redevelopment might be the route. That you want to choose and that enables some incentives, for example, a pilot. It doesn't mean that it always. Has a payment in lieu of taxes, uh, aspect, but that is allowable under the redevelopment law. If if you have a redevelopment designation for rehabilitation, um, that is not part of, a pilot is not part of that designation. So for that reason, rehabilitations tend tends to be more about, again, that, you know, the public realm improvements. And you can, um, you can get things like infrastructure improvements that the municipality might be looking for, uh, you know, on a holistic area, uh, streetscape. You know, public spaces, Rickleton Square being one of them. We have some recommendations about Rickleton. Um, and so rehabilitation might be a way to achieve some of those goals. When your goal is not necessarily, um, to address, you know, underutilized sites for new development perhaps. Um, so that's kind of the difference, um, and the different approach. Uh, it doesn't mean that, uh, a rehabilitation designation could include, for example, the study area that you were just talking about. Um, that is being studied particularly for re- redevelopment, um, so that approach can be taken as well. Um, but rehabilitation would be for the larger area, not as much focused on, again, new development or significant renovation. That makes sense.
Maybe the rules have changed, but my impression was that an area you need a rehabilitation can qualify for a five year. Um, uh, uh.
It's an abatement, right.
An abatement pilot, whatever.
Right, the pilot would be a thirty year and yeah, so that's the big difference.
Okay, um, now a comment, um. In two thousand seventeen, the township entered into an agreement, um, regarding affordable housing. Um, I guess that agreement was court, um, was 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 under the supervision of the court. Um, and that, uh, agreement stipulated that affordable housing. Um, that that for any multifamily development over, I think it was five units. Would be subject to inclusionary requirements, uh, fifteen percent inclusionary. Um, requirement for affordable housing in rental housing and a twenty percent in owned housing, i.e. Condos. Um, and at the time, um, uh, when I I was on the planning board then, uh, and at the time, um. I was uncomfortable with the twenty percent. Um, inclusionary requirement for condos. Because I had talked to a number, a couple of developers who said that at the scale available in Maplewood. Um, uh, the twenty percent rule would render condo development completely uneconomic. Um, and, um. I am aware that the economics and the financing of, uh, of condo developments are somewhat different than rental. Um, and to my knowledge, there has been no condo development Maplewood in the last five or six years. So I I think, uh, it would be helpful, and I don't know what the legal ramifications are, but it would be helpful maybe to reexamine. That twenty percent, um, uh, ex- inclusionary requirement to reduce it to something would make condo development more. Uh, economically viable. So that's just, uh, you know, recommendation. Um, I don't know if you've looked at that, but, um, I think it would be helpful.
So that is something that you'll be needing to look at when you do your housing fair share plan in the next eighteen months. I will say that generally, uh, it's become twenty percent across the board, whether rental or ownership. That's the direction that Fair Share Housing Center is sort of directing communities to. Uh, and I know that that can certainly affect the economics, but I I do know, um, one example in particular within fifteen minutes of Maplewood. Where it's an eight unit condo development, one of which is affordable, which is the twenty percent requirement. So it does happen. I think, uh, condos in general, um, have in the last decade become less profitable for developers. And they've been moving toward apartments for many other reasons. But, um, I I don't think that twenty percent is going away, is my my, uh, long answer. Um, but that is definitely going to be something that, um, that the township is going to have to look at as part of its housing. That there may be other ways to promote town townhouses in general. But, um, you're probably going to still have some kind of inclusionary set aside for those as well.
Thank you.
No, I think.
I just wanted to just say thank you, Susan, because that's exactly what I was thinking. And also, um, the condo market, Jim, went down, uh, in the two thousand eight. Um, economic crash and then, um, ever since then, developers are making more money off, um, rentals. So I think that's.
Yeah, I think there's the there are condos being developed elsewhere, but it does, it does require a lot of scale. And Maplewood does not have sufficient, um, uh, lot size. Uh, to make that kind of scale economic. Which is why, and I know, I think an inclusionary requirement is absolutely essential, but I was just saying. But I thought maybe it could be brought in parody with the rental inclusionary. Um, but again, you're, you know, Susan, I appreciate that we're going to be looking at this, um, you know, in another eighteen months, so.
Yeah, can I, Karen, I'm sorry to belabor the point here. I just want to jump in and just add additional color. So the financing of condos has changed significantly, especially as it relates to affordable housing development across the state. And that's because the the state's Affordable Housing Trust Fund has grown. It has mushroomed. Uh, for a lot of good reasons, and we do see developers who are now looking to and actually developing. Uh, townhomes and providing first time homeownership opportunity, uh, along the affordable housing mandates. Uh, and we had such interest actually, uh, on Yale Corner in that lot, which did not require, which is not, as you say, uh. Jim, you know, it requires a lot of scale. It doesn't necessarily require a lot of scale. Uh, I think what developers were, uh, resistant on were the economics, which have significantly changed. Because we did have a developer, for instance, that was interested in providing first time homeownership opportunity. Uh, affordable housing opportunity, uh, and was going to do so with, uh, mostly funding through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, through the state. Uh, so so, you know, the winds have shifted. And as Susan stated, um, at fifteen percent for rentals were actually low comparably to other places. Other places have a twenty percent, um, so I don't see us going down. Uh, and so we are sure housing during our negotiations soon, uh, are not going to, you know, be keen on that as well. So I just want to add additional context because we do have a lot of people here who are hearing this stuff for the first time.
Right. It's, uh, good information, Dean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nathanson, Ms. Adams, Mayor Daffos. Uh, and now we're going to move on to Ms. Sejour. Please feel free to take yourself off mute. Uh, give us your address and go ahead with your comments and questions.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, in the Sexer fifty seven Euclid Avenue. Um, first of all, I want to thank you all for your, uh, efforts and hard work. Um, I have a comment about the consolidation of zones. Um, I understand the intention to consolidate zones for clarity and consistency. Um, however, we have a number of unusual locations, for example, Pearson Road, which has been commented on already. And Donnell Road, and some of some of the zoning for those areas is really in response to what those unusual areas are. Um, what I would like to talk about is the parkside zone. I take exemption, I take exception to rezoning it. Um, and perhaps a longer discussion is required. Um, you said, if I understood, that you recommend changing it to the NB zone. But the parkside zone is a special zone because it is an unusual context. It is. Um, different from the typical business districts. It faces directly faces, it's a small area and it directly faces our, uh, historic Olmsted Designated Park. Um, the, so I think it really needs to be looked at more carefully because the parkside zone is the only such zone in town. And it is in response to that condition. Um, um, so I I would recommend that it not be changed. Um, however. From my reading of the zoning, there is what, in my opinion, is a flaw in the parkside zone in that. It allows for fast food business, and I've discussed this with a number of people over the years. Um, so I I do think that the parkside zone should remain unchanged. But I think it should be amended to exclude fast food restaurants, especially facing our our historic park. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll go to Michelle Alonso.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for a great presentation. My name is Michelle Alonso. I reside at six ninety two Valley Street. And many of you know me and I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey. I've been a land use planner for over twenty five years. I'm aging myself. But, um, my husband and myself were before this planning board about fifteen years ago. With the, uh, revision of the last master plan. And we, at that time, we requested that the mill, Pearson's Mill across the street. Not be rezoned a commercial district because of its unique nature. And that's regulations is based upon a very detailed resolution. And site plan that takes into consideration the unique aspects of the site, including historic preservation. And I was very happy that the planning board listened to our concerns, listened to our reasoning. And I ask the board members tonight to listen to us again. Because in in my eyes, this is a major rezoning because the resolution for that property restricts the uses that can be there. I don't remember exactly all them, but a big one is no restaurant can be there. And it functions very well now as an office slash retail service center. And it's also, um, to, if it's rezoned. To a regular business district, I I feel like that's a momentous change. And a change that was not highlighted in this master plan process and should have much more public input. Of people who live along Valley. In addition with that, if the board and the consultant wants to press ahead and make it a business zone. I think it needs to be its own unique zone. And again, those conditions of approval in that zoning board resolution, resolution need to be part. Of the regulations. Because even though you're saying it's going to be residential, it's going to have an overlay, as you know. If it's called out in the master plan, if someone goes to zoning board of adjustment and argues a use variance. if it's listed in the master plan, the proofs are basically there unless there's something else very harmful to the neighborhood to have it be granted. So of course, that is my main comment that I've been very involved in the process and that blindsided me. I do have two other comments about the presentation tonight. About urgent care centers, as you know, urgent care centers bring a lot of cars. They even bring more cars than regular medical offices which bring a lot of cars. And I would suggest that you do not allow them in every business zone because clearly certain zones like Maplewood Village and Springfield Avenue can't really handle that, the amount of parking that it would generate. I would of course suggest that it be where there are already buildings of that prototype because a lot of urgent care centers, as you know, are not mom and pop, they're run by larger medical organizations and they're going to be large scale. So I say that like the corner of Valley and Milburn, the corner of Milburn and Springfield, any of those larger office building zones. And then comment about yes? Oh, okay, about the loosening of the industrial district to permit restaurants. I would recommend it be more of a hybrid maker space, commercial kitchen, restaurant zone. Otherwise, you're going to go down a slippery slope of losing a good section of the active industrial zone. Because again, if it's a recommendation in the master plan, it can be used towards arguments for use variance and we could very well lose industrial space again fifteen years ago. Myself and my husband had commented about the importance of retaining at least a small industrial district. And again, while industry today is different, we all know the need for maker space has grown and that is a new twenty first century use category. And then my final comment, which I didn't plan to comment on it, but based on someone else's about area need of rehabilitation. I do have to let you know, you can give a pilot in an area need of rehabilitation when it's paired with a UEZ zone. You can carve out an individual redevelopment plan. And if it's also in a UEZ zone, a governing body can give a long term pilot. It's a little trick that I've used in Newark and now I use in my current job in Asbury Park, just to let you guys know that. And that's.
Just to be clear, Maplewood is not in a UEZ zone, but it's a, it's a very good and accurate point. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to Mr. Thomas Conway.
Hi, my name is Thomas Conway. I'm at a four two three Ridgewood Road in Maplewood. I was kind of pulled in to a conversation that unfortunately I put on social media, but kind of had to just to get a conversation going about a development project that Kathy Rowe referenced to twenty seven St. Lawrence Avenue. And my background as an architect and a preservationist and and having playing background, I have talked quite a bit to a number of different people. I just had a meeting today with Susan Newberry. I served as the preservation, the store preservation commission chair for the past ten years in the city summit where my office is my architectural office. And I'm also a a restaurant owner here in our community, Bistro D'Azur in South Orange. But my point is that we want, I think the conversations that have come up between all the architects and preservations, et cetera, is that I just want to bring note, I think it's great, everything that you've said in, in this presentation today, everything that's going into the master plan is perfect. I just think that when we talk about implementation in looking at this piece of zoning regulations, et cetera, maybe reviewing that. I think it's an important aspect and I'm hoping to establish with some sort of way zoning subcommittee to help advise the planning board. I know that I talked to Tom Carlson at the last, at our last master plan meeting. And he said, oh, I talked to Mayor Daffes and I think that that's an important thing that can happen quickly to just look at that because the key is that Maplewood has tipped the scales suddenly. And talking about sustainability and affordable housing, et cetera, suddenly real estate has skyrocketed with limited amounts of availability. So there's a lot of development pressure, a lot in our residential neighborhoods and it's increasing very aggressively as we've seen with the tear down of the Stark House on Parker. And as we've seen in this redevelopment that's gone on across the street from me, and I think everyone knows it, anybody that walks along Ridgewood knows that project specifically. And I think in looking at that group, I think we want to look at zoning requirements, single family and multifamily residential zones and, and close any loopholes and clarify definitions and regulations in our zoning ordinance. So for instance, like clarifying the definition of what an eve is so that everybody that is a developer under actually understands what an eve is. We have required forty, twenty four inch, twenty four foot maximum eve requirement. And on the development across the street from us, everybody talked about height. But they didn't really, it didn't get interpreted through the eve determination. And as everyone knows, the, an eve sits, it's a end of a roof that caps an outer wall. So the eve actually is supposed to sit right on top of the second floor in a two story zone. So this is where there's confusion and where we make clarifications in these aspects in our zoning regulations will make it much easier for the zoning billing department to communicate with the zoning board of adjustment with planning board, et cetera. And knowing that, because I've been doing that for thirty years in the city of Summit and have built dozens of historically contextual projects here in Maplewood, even the addition onto the Timothy Ball House with where Kathy lives that are kind of seamless. And I think that we have to look at this specifically regarding bulk mass addicts allowed additions or renovations, et cetera, and provide a more contextual development regulations. Maybe including average size, street patterns and streetscape. That's all I have to say, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Certainly, as I said earlier this evening, nothing is happening this evening, tonight, no action is being taken. And certainly, if there were changes to ordinances, they would be available for public comment, they would be before the planning board. So I'll, I'll take in in good consideration. Thank you. Now we'll turn to Mr. David Helm Camp. Please go ahead.
Good evening. And it's Dave Helm Camp at five seventy one Prospect Street. Susan, thank you so much. Thank you to your team. I think it's a real ten year plan. I think it's also about ten years of reading. That's okay. I tend to read it cover to cover. I have two suggestions and, and a question regarding the PRB overlay suggestion. Included, I, I think it's a great idea. Particularly emphasis on commercial uses, but it also includes mixed use. And, and it doesn't address the challenges of parking for mixed use. And I thought that it might be a good idea to flesh that out a little bit, and particularly reference some of the ideas on page ninety six, the prior page. Specifically as it might relate to, to the PRB overlay. Second suggestion is a, also a zoning one. There's a recommendation to convert the OB district along Valley Street to MB. I don't have a strong you know, sense a priori, whether that's a good idea or not, I think it's worth looking at. I, I have a just a longstanding vision or hope that what we do in that general vicinity has synergy with the high school as much as possible. So, so a wholesale change from OB to MB just feels like a big step without thinking about that aspect. The third point is, and it relates pretty closely to what Mr. Conway was just saying. There were several recommendations for professional staff to add. And putting aside the fact that they have salaries. I'm wondering if you had given any thought to recommending that we have a professional planner.
Who'd you have in mind, Dave? I'm just kidding. I'll be honest, it didn't come up because I think that the townships, at least my impression is the, the experience has been that the combination of your own planning staff and the consulting planners that the township has hired on occasion has, has worked. I haven't heard anything. The contrary, that doesn't mean that, that that couldn't be considered at some point. But I will say that, that I think Maplewood, given its size, is very similar to many other municipalities that I'm aware of, that that general, generally rely on consulting planners as opposed to full time interior staff, that the places where I'm aware that they, they do have staff are much larger. They generally have a much larger budget to support that. You know, we're aware that we're, you know, recommending staff is, is, you know, a cost that is being suggested for the township. So that's something that, that they might want to be strategic about. Like, for example, a grant writer doesn't necessarily have to be a full time in-house grant writer. A lot of communities consult out for that. You know, communications maybe isn't even a full time, but, but that's something to look at. That's a long way of saying that it didn't come up. I'm a big fan of professional planners being one, but that didn't arise to a recommendation that we heard as part of this process.
Yeah. And I was thinking of also on a contract, part time basis. Some towns have that, that function, just like they have an engineer on the planning.
Yes, yeah.
But.
And, and that's something that you could consider if, if the pace of applications picks up to, to a degree where it starts to become problematic for the planning board. That is something that we, we very much often see where the, you have a consulting planner who attends most of the meetings. So that could definitely be considered. It's, it's typically not a huge budget issue for the municipality because it's generally paid for through escrow of the applications. So that's definitely something you could look at.
And, and in the immediate context, there's the challenge of sorting through all these recommendations and providing some continuity across turnover and leadership and turnover in the planning board. I don't know that there's anyone that, that can be expected to, to become the mind of, of the township, so to speak, and on a ten year timeframe. But thank you.
Thanks.
The township definitely has benefited from having some members of the planning board that have been on the planning board for a very long period of time. Like to recognize Mr. Carlson, because he certainly has been on the planning board, Mr. Nathanson, who's also on this meeting and spoke earlier this evening, was on the planning board for a number of years. We've, we've had the benefit of having people that have kind of carried forth institutional knowledge, if you will. And it's, it's definitely been to the benefit of, of the township and, and the activities of the planning board, so.
Is our consulting engineer for the planning board also a professional planner, Chad? Do you click both boxes? He's, is he, is he on the meeting?
I'm here, I'm here.
Do you have your PP license as well as your PE?
Yes.
Oh, see?
There you go.
I don't use it that often, but technically, yes.
Yeah, technically, yes.
I did.
And we are fortunate.
I definitely did not mean to overlook the people who have been around for a long time.
No, no, I just, I thought it was a good opportunity to recognize those who, who have served for, for many years. And there, and there have been others. It's just, those are few who are here this evening. And so just figured I would recognize them, given the impromptu opportunity to do so. So.
Thank you.
You're, you're, you're also, there wasn't anything else? Mr. Helm Camp?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, great. Then we will turn, and we will give our attention to Ms. Susan Newberry. Oh, you're muted. It's okay. Take your time.
Yeah, I thought maybe you had to do it for me.
Nope, that's okay. Please go ahead.
Okay. I live at twenty five Durant Road in Maplewood and I'm a commissioner on the historic preservation and I'm a township historian. And we'll, we'll be sending some corrections, historical collections procedural questions to you, the planning board regarding the plan. For instance, about the procedure for management of the neighborhood. Sorry, the Maplewood villages. And I also, I can't speak for the entire body of the commission, but I know we look, I, we look forward to updating the preservation element. In fact, we thought that was going to be part of this process. And also examining incentives for property owners. We've been concerned about that for a long time. And like, and design guidelines for historic areas, I think would be terrific, not just for partly designated homeowners, but the rest of the community. First, that does take funding. And I believe that, that myself and the mission probably would be very interested in setting the demolition delay ordinance for buildings of a certain age. Note that when the commission was begun, we were told this was not possible. In strength of these statutes, but that may have changed by now. So I think that's, that's it.
Susan, what was the last thing you said? Because you kind of went out in the last comment. Because you're away from your mic a little bit.
Sorry. About the demolition delay ordinance and buildings of a certain age, we would be interested in examining that probably with the planning board. But when we, the commission itself was created, we were told by SHPO and maybe our historic preservation lawyer that that was not possible at that time. You know, twenty years ago, that there were constraints by New Jersey statute at that time. But then I just learned today, there are communities that do have that in play.
Yeah, I believe that's true. And not to, not to like call anyone out, but Mr. Conway, I believe the city of Summit has such a, such a ordinance to help with preserving older, older homes without necessarily designating them historically. So I don't want to call you out like suddenly like that, but.
I don't, I don't mind. City of Summit has a historic preservation commission that it also has twelve historic districts. The historic preservation commission is advisory to planning board and board of adjustment council and the mayor. We do have guidelines and we have a lot of layers of information, including designated. Not only we have a downtown that's historic district, but we also have a, two other layers of preservation. And, and, but we are still in city of Summit, and I say we, which I'm no longer part of the we, looking to really slow down demolition, which is what we're talking about here. A lot of towns are trying to do that. And things that are outside the historic district, houses just literally get torn down before they even go on the market. They, because the property is so valuable. That's what's, that's my worry here in Maplewood. As I'm suddenly starting to see the signs, because I've been working in Summit for over thirty years. And we saw this then and we're seeing it again now in Summit, even in the larger neighborhoods on the north side with huge properties. So. With huge properties. So imagine that suddenly anybody that's putting their house on the market on Durant or or uh Prospect or whatever. They just decide, I'm going to tear down my huge historic house and just put the property on the market. And there's nothing to stop that. So that um because of the way uh the ordinance is specifically written. And there are ways to layer in a lot of review processes. And as uh Susan mentioned, there are some, it there are things to consider. And um SHPO about, you know, can you really stop demolition? Not necessarily everywhere, but you can create a lot of barriers and hurdles. That that um make developers not interested in those properties. And move on to other uh places. And certainly, that was the point I was making about Maplewood is just that we need to create enough regulations. Because what's happened now is there's so many regulations in Madison, in Chatham, in Short Hills, in Summit. In in um Marstown, uh Westfield, et cetera, that now the developers are moving here. And that's not a good pattern. So I just want you to be aware of that, because I've seen it this road before. So I didn't need to go down a too long of a path.
Yeah, I just want to add a little more to this, uh Karen, if I may. Uh, so we discussed this in code committee this morning and since then, I've had the opportunity to speak with Susan. And Susan, I'll let you uh chime in as well. Um, so it isn't Summit that has a pause on demo. On properties of historic value, properties that do not need to be historically designated. They're properties of historic value and there's various ways that you can define that by age, by type and so on and so forth. Architectural type and so on and so forth. It is rather uh communities near us and similar to us, such as Montclair, most notably. Hoboken, Jersey City, um and a couple of others that are escaping me at the moment. Uh, again, you can't, uh you can hit a pause, it's a pause on demolition, which as Mr. Conway just explained. Um, you know, could get a redeveloper to reconsider and it allows the township at least to know what's happening and to get in front of it. Susan, did you want to add any more to that?
Yeah, I think the only one you were forgetting was Marstown. But um but some, you know, some comps to you all who have looked at different ways of of, you know, again, pausing. Whether that's across the board, a couple of places have done that, you know, any thing, any demolition, you know, needs a permit. Um, some places have looked at specific zones. I think Hoboken, it's like their residential zones and their central business district. Um, and then others, it's it's only properties that are either formally designated or otherwise recognized in the historic element. Which which could be helpful uh for you all, because there may be properties in your um existing historic preservation element. That are noted as uh significant, but maybe haven't been fully designated and and they could be looped into that as well.
Right.
All right, lots to think about. Um, is there anyone else from the public? Who would like to either ask a question or share a comment on the draft of the master plan? All right, and just one more time, I'll loop back around. Are there any members of the planning board who at this point? Want to share any further thoughts or ask any questions? Mr. Carlson?
Yes. I wanted to remind you, Karen, that we received some written comments from two members of the environmental advisory committee. Uh, who I think may or may not be in attendance here this evening, but we should at least acknowledge that receipt. Uh, and the fact that they were distributed to uh board members. I don't know if they were distributed beyond the board.
Yes, I um I let both gentlemen know that their comments were shared with the members of the planning board and with BFJ. Um, so those have been, you know, tho- those people have been alerted to that. Um, and there is still an opportunity to um to share, you know, further comment over the next few weeks. Uh, with the planning board directly. So, Mr. Greenfeld, please go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, thank you, I just had a procedural question. I um my. Uh remarks from earlier, I have written that I would like to send in, just so you have an accurate transcription. Who should I send it to?
Um, the, I would send it to the chair, uh I'm sorry, the to the secretary of the planning board. And I just want to look up Ms. Lewis's.
I I have her.
Email address, okay, yes, send it to to Ms. Lewis and you'll share it with the planning board. And we will certainly share it with the folks at BFJ as well.
Great, thank you.
And Karen, if I could add, if anyone has very detailed comments, we know uh we we say township. Council a few times, so not committing things like that, typos, um written comments are the best way to to get at those details. They're really easy for us to kind of tick off.
Yeah, and to that point, Chair Prashoda, um I believe Michael Edelson like had a pretty long memo, extensive memo. Has that been received by BFJ?
Is that the one that Ms. Lewis sent around today with the comments from three different people?
No, no.
Yesterday.
It was Mr. Edelson's comments alone, I believe. I was reading it, um I think it was yesterday or the day before.
I haven't seen those.
Well, I don't think I've seen them either.
Mr. Edelson, can you help me? No? That's a Zoom thing. You're off off camera, so you may not even be there.
No, I said, I don't think I've seen them either.
Oh, wait, what? What am I talking about then? Maybe I I attributed them to you and they were somebody else.
Yeah, there were, there were comments that were received from from three different folks. And um and I had shared them with Mr. Edelson and Ms. Lewis, as well as with BFJ. And then Mr. Edelson's advice was that they be shared with the entire planning board. So I think that's what you're referring to, right?
You mean my multitasking is confusing me a little bit?
No, I would never suggest that. But I, but those are the three people, well, uh Mr. Carlson was referring to two of those people. Each of those three people, though, received a response from me. They each reached out to me personally. They each received a response from me, letting them know that their comments had been shared with BFJ. As well as with the rest of the planning board and absolutely will be considered, so. All right, any any other questions or comments from anyone? This has been good discussion and um. Oh, and uh and Mayor Daffis has put Adele Lewis's email address. Adele Lewis is, of course, the wonderful secretary of both the planning board and the zoning board and keeps us all in line. And um so uh Mayor Daffis put her email address in the chat. Uh, so for anyone who wants to uh correspond directly with the planning board, that would be the best way to do it. And uh certainly, comments will be shared with with plant members of the planning board, uh as well as with BFJ. So, all right, well, I don't see any uh further uh indication of anyone that wants to share any thoughts. Or ask any questions. Um, but certainly, the the public comment period is indeed open. Um, we will address the master plan uh again at our next meeting in July on Tuesday, July eleventh. At seven thirty, uh that will also be a virtual meeting. Um. And so I'm not going to close the public comment session because it is indeed still open. Uh, and so at this point, um the floor is open. If there's anything anyone wants to uh address the planning board, whether it's related to the master plan or not. Um, members of the public are welcome to do so. All right, not seeing anyone who wants to share anything else with us. Um, I would love to hear a um. Nancy can read my mind.
I know.
All right then, well, thank you everyone for your attention this evening and your comments. And um we will carry on at the July eleventh meeting. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, thanks everyone.
Good night.